been advertised has been provided by advertising such notice in the home news Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the board office, the schools and Cablevision Channel 118 and Verias and FiOS Channel 24. And by filing such notice with the township clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, May 13th, 2025. The board will take formal action on payment of bills and other agenda items. Mr. Widel?
The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the board, have the right to record public board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that the act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public board meeting. Therefore, the board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual and in no manner represents the official record of this board. The board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Roll call please.
Done.
Here.
Francisco.
Here.
Giordano.
Here.
Jodri.
Here.
Mazon.
Here.
Slade.
Here.
Solakowski.
Here.
Venkatesan.
Yeah.
Dan Tuno.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Can everyone please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance. Before we get into the agenda, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session just because the state has not gotten back to us as a board. And I would like the board to understand what our options and voting mean for the budget. Because I don't want a repeat of what happened with the superintendent's contract.
So for attorney-client privilege pertaining to the budget?
Yes.
Giordano, a second.
And any questions privately, I'll bring back publicly, but I want us as a board to understand what we're voting because it is such a big vote.
Okay, you have, you have motion in a second.
Roll call? Or how do we do it? Roll call please?
Motion to go into executive session will go Dunn.
Yes.
Francisco.
Yes.
Giordano.
Yes.
Jodri.
Yes.
Mazon.
Yeah.
Slade.
Yes.
Solakowski.
Yes.
Venkatesan.
Yes.
Dan Tuno.
Yes.
We will enter into executive session at 7:03.
We'll be back shortly. Been advertised has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the board office, the schools and Cablevision Channel 118 and Verias and FiOS Channel 24. And by filing such notice with the township clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, May 13th, 2025. The board will take formal action on payment of bills and other agenda items. Mr. Widel?
The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the board, have the right to record public board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that the act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public board meeting. Therefore, the board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual and in no manner represents the official record of this board. The board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Roll call please.
Done.
Here.
Francisco.
Here.
Giordano.
Here.
Jodri.
Here.
Mazon.
Here.
Slade.
Here.
Solakowski.
Here.
Venkatesan.
Yeah.
Dan Tuno.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Can everyone please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance. Before we get into the agenda, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session just because the state has not gotten back to us as a board. And I would like the board to understand what our options and voting mean for the budget. Because I don't want a repeat of what happened with the superintendent's contract.
So for attorney-client privilege pertaining to the budget?
Yes.
Giordano, a second.
And any questions privately, I'll bring back publicly, but I want us as a board to understand what we're voting because it is such a big vote.
Okay, you have, you have motion in a second.
Roll call? Or how do we do it? Roll call please?
Motion to go into executive session will go Dunn.
Yes.
Francisco.
Yes.
Giordano.
Yes.
Jodri.
Yes.
Mazon.
Yeah.
Slade.
Yes.
Solakowski.
Yes.
Venkatesan.
Yes.
Dan Tuno.
Yes.
We will enter into executive session at 7:03.
We'll be back shortly.
The agenda. Who wants to read the Code of Ethics next week?
I will.
Who was that? Okay, Christina. All right. Minute. Student rep. We'll have some recognition next week. And next week is also the Teacher of the Year. So that'll be a big one. We'll be in the auditorium of the high school.
I'll pick up the retirees again.
Okay, thanks Matt. Anything on the superintendent's report today?
No, I was just gonna remind everyone that the one of the best meetings of the year, the Teacher of the Year and ESP of the Year ceremony takes place on the twentieth in the auditorium. We'll also have grants from the Ed Foundation given out to the educators who applied for them.
Cool. We'll talk about the goals and then correspondence. Do we have anything for today?
We do have one correspondence. And again, I know there was correspondence coming through emails. I will only read again if there's expressive consent, which this correspondence did provide. Okay, this is from Ann Etlinger. Dear Mr. Weidel, I want to thank you for all your hard work on the budget. Please read the following at the next board meeting. This letter is in regards to the budget cuts. As a mother of three in Old Bridge, I hope the board chooses to keep kindergarten, not close any elementary schools, and keep class sizes to a minimum. I accept the highest tax increase to protect this student's educational experience, but I hope in the future the board looks to other financial assistance. I wonder if the district is taking full advantage of any and all grants. My sister is a teacher, and in her previous school they had someone dedicated to writing and applying to grants on a daily basis, not just from the state, but from foundations and nonprofits as well. We have some of the nation's best universities in our state. I hope we are utilizing internships and/or volunteer experience from students at Rutgers, Princeton, Rider Rowan, etc. This could help teachers and/or fill gaps in art and music programs. Has the board thought or reached out for corporate sponsorships? The RWJ Barnabas Health Arena in Toms River has generated revenue for the school district through a naming rights agreement. In December 2017, the district approved a five-year sponsorship deal with RWJ Barnabas Health quoted online to be $637,500. I'm not saying I want my child to go to Costco Elementary School, but if that is what it takes to have an amazing school system, then so be it. I sincerely hope this board keeps kindergarten, does not close any elementary schools, and keeps class sizes to a minimum. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Ann Etlinger. That concludes correspondence.
Thank you. We'll have some special committee reports. I have a question for the board, an idea that I had with the special committee reports. Because we kind of give them and then we don't talk about them as a board. And the whole point of the committees, at least my understanding is that so this way the whole board doesn't have to go to every committee. What if we start making the conversations about the special committee reports at the agenda meetings? So we share the committee reports at the agenda meetings and then we, as a board, discuss, you know, how that is working with our goals and kind of have more conversation about the committee work and how it fits our strategic plan. Any thoughts, feedback?
Well, isn't that what the agenda meetings are for? To kind of...
Well, we don't share the committee report. So, for example, if this was in effect this month, it would really start in June, like we had a food service meeting this morning. We could share some of that and then not just give the report to the public, but actually as a board, discuss what the Food Service Committee is sharing. Because I think that's the component that we're missing. It's talking as a board so that the committee isn't like its own mini-board doing its own directive. That was my thought.
I like the idea. I just think that we have to keep a time limit on each discussion possibly, just to make sure that it doesn't become another committee meeting. That's my only concern is that, you know, the timeframe. But I mean, I think it's a good idea.
We can keep each other conscious, okay. So that would take effect in June then, for that. Okay. Hearing of the residents on agenda items only. So at this point, the mic is open. Is there a binder in the podium? Is anyone speaking today?
Andrew Lewis, OBEA. Does Costco Elementary have samples? I want to thank you for the incredibly difficult work that you do on behalf of our schools. I know the twentieth budget vote won't be easy. The proposed budgets last week painted two very different pictures of our district's future. One version reflects stability, a continued commitment to the kind of schools that we've worked hard to build, and one that looks like a nightmare. We wouldn't wish it on any of our children. I'm not here to simplify what is clearly a complicated fiscal situation. I understand the competing pressures, the shrinking revenues, the growing costs, and the state-level decisions, or lack of decisions, that tie your hands. I know you're weighing community feedback, legal obligations, and long-term sustainability. I truly respect that. But I also know that you didn't run for these seats to make the easy decisions. You ran to make the right ones. Tonight, you face a choice between managing scarcity or choosing to invest in the success of our students, between accepting painful cuts or fighting for the future that our students deserve. And while I understand the pressures, financial, political, even emotional, I urge you to keep one thing at the center of your decision: our students. Because while the spreadsheets and scenarios may be abstract, the impact of those choices is not. When we talk about cuts, we're talking about the future of our students. The five-year-old who won't go to kindergarten next year because the program won't exist. The student whose school is forced to close with barely enough time this school year for them to make alternate plans. The eighth grader who's been looking forward all year to selecting their high school elective, something that helps them feel excited about learning. The athlete who loses their sports, their teams, their sense of belonging. These aren't hypothetical losses; they're actual consequences with lasting impacts. You may hear that taxpayers won't want to tolerate higher costs, that the community won't support the investments needed to preserve these programs. I believe that the truth is more nuanced than that. Taxpayers can be disappointed by budgets, but they're devastated by broken promises and shattered futures. And what's more, they're inspired when our leaders stand up to protect our students. People can forgive fiscal turbulence, but they won't forget the day their child's school closed, or the moment they realize that their public school no longer resembled the vibrant, opportunity-filled places they once believed. You can't balance the budget by bankrupting the opportunities of our children. You can't claim to support education while dismantling the very programs that make our schools places where our students thrive academically, socially, emotionally, and creativity. We need to invest in success, not slash our way into survival. If we must ask for support, whether it's from the community or the state, let's do so proudly, standing on a record of putting our students first. I'm not asking you to ignore the challenges. I'm asking you to face them with vision, to choose the version of our district that reflects hope and determination, not fear and resignation. When all is said and done, I believe that our community wants to be proud of its schools. And I believe you want to look back on tonight's vote knowing that you chose the future. Because every child in this community deserves the kind of education that opens doors, not the one that slams them shut before they even get a chance. Thank you for your time and hopefully for your courage tonight.
If anybody else is going to speak, can you ask, we ask you to form a line so that we just know how many were in front of us? Thank you.
Hey, everyone. Good evening. My name is Jeff Finkstein. I'm a lifelong resident of Old Bridge. I'm here to talk about the budget. You know, this seems like a recurring problem every year. State cutbacks. Seems like there's a, when you look at the whole picture, there's a target of going after blue towns or Democrat towns, sorry, going after Republican towns by taking money from Republican towns and giving it to Democrat towns. So, I mean, the data is right there. Newark's getting $1.2 billion of funding. Our money, some of our money. I don't know why they need $1.2 billion. If you look across the entire state, town by town, school district by school district, all the money is being shoved to blue towns. Are any of you contacting the state? I know you've been to meetings, but unfortunately, that doesn't mean anything. Have you contacted a lawyer? We have a lawyer right here who's employed by this Board of Ed. How come no one is filing a lawsuit against Murphy and the state? If this was a Republican governor doing this to Democrat towns, I am sure there would be an uproar from these Democrat towns taking money away from those towns and giving it to Republican towns. It's absurd that nobody's filed a lawsuit. I mean, again, we have a lawyer right here. So, I mean, instead of saying you can't do anything, okay, the state's not going to change what they're doing. Take them to court, see what happens. It may cost money, but if you form like a coalition with other towns that are affected by this, it may be a lot less than what you really think it is. It doesn't hurt to do it. Anyone can file a lawsuit against anybody. Now, the question, if you win or not, that's another story. That's for the judges to decide and the people to decide. But the initial taking somebody to court for a lawsuit, you know, I don't think that has been tried yet. And every year, we've been losing property. Cheeseberg School, the Bus Depot has been sold. There's no after-school buses. I know there is for games, but not for activities, groups, clubs, practices, extra help. Those have been cut. So the only thing is after-school buses is for the varsity, well, not the varsity, the actual games, the sports games, where we have, where the town provides, well, the school district provides after-school busing. So, you know, I did not come here in a clown car today, Mr. Slade. I'm a resident, longer than you've been a resident of, okay? I've been here all my life. And I think you got to get some backbone. You really got to go and challenge the status quo of being ripped off by the state. Because my kids are in this town, and I don't want these cuts to affect them either. But it's so easy just to raise taxes. It's so easy. And then you blame somebody else for doing it. The easiest thing to raise taxes. Oh, it wasn't me, you know? I had to do it. I really think you guys need to do something different. Challenge yourselves. Do something that you've never done before, because every year, for the last few years, you've been raising taxes, raising taxes and selling land. There's nothing else to sell. All you're going to do is keep raising taxes. We're going to be here again. I actually was here last year, same conversation about the busing. And here I am, a year later, same conversation, and I'm going to be here probably next year for the taxes being increased as well, over 2% because you're running out of money. But no one's doing anything about it. You're just saying, I went to Trenton and I attended meetings. Trenton doesn't really care. Take them to court. Take them to court. Let them answer for their actions. I hear there's no formula that's visible to everybody could see. Did anyone take them to court and say, I want to see the formula? Show us the formula of how you got to the numbers. How is Perth Amboy getting all this money? How is Newark getting all this money? We are a big town as well. We have a lot of schools here, a lot of kids here. We can't just say, raise taxes. You got to think. You got to do something different that you haven't done before. Thank you.
After you sign the binder, if you could just pass it back to save some time.
Good evening. My name is Alicia Tenaro. I'm a parent of two elementary school children. I'm an Old Bridge resident and taxpayer, and I'm a math teacher at Jonas Salk Middle School. Over the past two weeks, I have communicated with several board members about class size concerns and inquired why this issue has not been addressed in this year's budget. The responses I've received have basically said that the majority of the community is more concerned with extracurriculars and special programs, so those things need to be prioritized over reducing class sizes and addressing other academic concerns. Although I understand the board's need to listen to the community and vote accordingly, you also need to realize that if you are going to continue to allow class sizes to be at 25 or more, then you need to budget for the classroom needs associated with those class sizes. At Salk, we are running out of desks and chairs for students, and much of what we do have are old, broken, and potentially dangerous. Additionally, students and teachers are low on supplies. Because you want to base your decisions on the priorities of the majority, perhaps you should send a survey to our teachers, asking them what they need and what they can do without. I urge you to consider eliminating items from the budget that are unnecessary and reallocating those funds to better support our teachers in providing a safe, positive, and effective learning environment for our children. If my taxes are going to increase again, I would at least like to know that my money is being well-spent and going towards enhancing the learning experiences for my children and for my students. After last year's tax increase, I feel like I paid more money to watch the quality of our children's academics decline. I don't understand how you go from these two options of cutting everything, all these drastic cuts, to we're going to cut nothing and put it all on the taxpayer. There has to be something in between. There needs to be some kind of compromise. And you can't tell me that there's not a single thing that you can cut from the budget that wouldn't have the drastic impact of cutting kindergarten or going to half-day high school. There has to be some things. And I know that those are the more expensive things that would affect the budget more and help you more, but there's a lot of little things that could add up and maybe give me more than $20 worth of supplies every year so that I don't have to buy my own tape, staples, dry erase markers, and all of that to support my students. So thank you to those of you who responded and heard my concerns. I hope the rest of you will consider what I have said tonight. Thank you.
I'm short. My name is Samantha Caridi. I am a mother of four with two kids currently in elementary school and one entering kindergarten next year. I might be in the minority when I say this, but I am not completely opposed to raising taxes. I moved here in 2021, and when shopping for houses, it was very evident that taxes are much lower here than in neighboring towns. I originally was looking in those towns specifically for their schools, but fate landed us in Old Bridge, and I was excited to see what you guys had to offer. And let me say, in a lot of ways, you guys are letting me down. You talk about all the scary things that will happen if we don't raise the taxes, but then you gloss over everything you will do when the taxes are raised. There is waste happening in this town's school system and lack of funding where it is needed. Many people are not aware, because late buses were such a hot topic, that entire blocks of classes were cut from the middle school. That doesn't sound like such a big deal until you realize that the class sizes increased substantially to the point they're cramming kids into rooms that don't even have enough chairs. My son's kindergarten class last year had 25 kids in kindergarten, when most kids can't even tie their shoes. How about my kindergartner doesn't need a laptop? My kindergartner needs another teacher so the class sizes can decrease. That would be a better use of the funds. Class size should always be the number-one priority for schools. You can have all the cool programs and tech and sports teams in the world, but if you are cramming too many kids in a class, you aren't giving the amazing teachers the opportunity to teach the kids because their focus is too divided and the class is too chaotic. I don't understand why this board is so focused on the extras and not starting with the basics, like refunding the middle school to bring back a block or reducing class sizes in the elementary school. I get it that it's fun to have sports in middle school, but that's an afterthought when you have extra money to spend, which we obviously do not. I have children that have tested gifted, and your decisions are going to affect whether they will get an education that challenges them to the best of their ability, or whether they're stuck in crowded classrooms and missing opportunities to learn because their teachers are overwhelmed with class sizes. I have teachers, I've had teachers tell me that their kids are missing out on opportunities to learn that prior years had simply because the class is too large to do certain activities or lessons. I understand having opportunities for all kids is important, even those that are not college-bound, but what about the kids who are college-bound?
Good evening. Brooke Richards Patterson. I didn't write an essay, but those were really nice. I was just taking notes because I've already emailed and asked questions and attended the most recent committee meeting. But, you know, just to piggyback off a couple of things, you know, it really wouldn't hurt to probably look into legal action considering there's, you know, how many districts that are going through this and potentially band together. I mean, you have Jackson, Brick, Lakewood, Little Egg Harbor, Lacey, you know, there's all of us going through it. We could be, you know, everybody collectively putting their minds together and a little bit of funds to maybe push back on some of this. I know Toms River is, you know, filing a lawsuit against the state. You know, we moved here 12 years, almost 13 years ago, and the school system looks very different for my son than it did for my daughter. And I just hate to go backwards, but I also, you know, I can't realistically afford to keep increasing taxes. You know, there was a mom that mentioned that taxes are low here. It's because we haven't been reassessed. Be careful what you wish for there because it's around the corner and it hasn't been done in, you know, probably 30 years, so we're going to get hit. I mean, there's people that pay $19,000 in taxes in this district. So, and that's without the reassessment. So I would just hope that you consider, you know, I've sent emails, some people have answered, some people have been a little snarky. I would, you know, I maybe tone that down a little. I'm just trying to be practical and maybe think outside of the box a little bit, like a lot of us. And we, you know, we deserve to have a say. I think this would have been nice to know about before a couple of weeks ago, just so that we could all, you know, give some suggestions. Or, you know, you're talking about making a vote tonight. We could have talked about, you know, what are the other districts doing, the S2 districts, and work together. So all I can say is, you know, as far as, you know, cuts, I would consider cutting either the summer school program if you're not going to allow children to test out of it, because right now it just requires attendance. If you're going to change that, I was told it might change in curriculum, put that responsibility on the parent. It's like $30,000, you know, every little bit adds up, and not the taxpayer. If the parent has a hardship, just like, you know, other things, have them fill out an application, see what you can do for that specific parent. The vending machine clause, I had mentioned that. I know Mr. Slade and I have that in common with the constant spending of our kids with the vending machines. Increase the price. If it's 25% that, you know, with all these vending machines in the district, increase the price of the products to make a couple bucks for them. And I am all for a pay-to-play. I've said it with the late buses, and I feel the same way about sports. Most of us, especially by middle school, high school, we're already paying for privates and travel and everything else, you know? So if we have to pay for baseball right now because it means to save the taxpayer a little bit of money, then that's what it means. Because, you know, that's just a small amount in comparison to paying, you know, a few extra grand in taxes. So that was it. Thank you. And I know this isn't an easy decision, and I know it hasn't a quick decision for you guys, but it is a quick thought process for us, you know? And I feel like we, the stakeholders are like an afterthought. And so I would appreciate a little more transparency and sooner. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Hi, everyone. I'm Marie Kama Wicks, an Old Bridge lifer and a parent of three. I haven't spoken at the last few meetings due to the overwhelming changes with state aid cuts, the budget presentations, and Dave leaving. I apologize to you, Dave, for not speaking earlier, but I am sad to see you leave, and I'm shocked about the one-year renewal vote and the news of your departure. But I'm grateful that your worth is recognized through Wayne and your legacy will live on in Old Bridge. But today, I want to discuss the critical matter for our community and our children's future. We are definitely at a crossroad, facing a decision that will shape Old Bridge's educational landscape for next year and the years to come. Our schools are the heart of a community which provides education, a safe environment for our children to grow, thrive, and learn. We now face the challenge of either increasing the taxes from the state levying aid to save our schools, or we're voting no to renew taxes, which are going to result in the loss of vital programs. Increasing taxes is never easy, but it is a consideration for the Board of Education and for our community. By choosing to increase taxes responsibly, we invest in the future of our children and our community. The funding received will ensure that our schools can continue to offer high-quality education, maintain smaller class sizes, and provide essential programs such as arts, music, sports, and special education services. These programs foster creativity, teamwork, and critical thinking skills, which our children need for success. Losing them would be a disservice to our children and their future. I've heard various comments from residents about taxes being too high in Old Bridge, the need to cut more programs and staff. However, a lot of the programs that have evolved in our Old Bridge school district to enhance our children's education come at a risk due to an $18 million budget gap. Between decreased state aid funds, outdated state formulas, rising costs for basics like health premium that went up 17%, electricity, we are now in a perfect storm. We must maintain the core programs, enhance our services for our students, advance our education. Now, I've said it before, I've been in Old Bridge for 50 years. I'm a product, I now have second generation going through, with my kids, one still currently in the school district, and I've seen the evolution of our schools for the last 50-plus years. So from the creation of advanced gifted programs, like the, what was it, the Challenger Program, to the introduction of full-day kindergarten, my kids ended up with half-day and $32,000 of private kindergarten is no fun. Our district, though, has made significant strides in the last couple of years. These advancements are now at the risk. It's not about the extravagant enhancements that we need to keep. We need to make sure we keep the basic cores, the education, and make sure that we maintain our home values and ensure a prosperous future for Old Bridge and all its future. Voting not to renew taxes, it may ease the financial burden in the short term like a Band-Aid, but it could have long-term consequences. Without necessary funding, our schools face these cuts leading to larger class sizes, which some already have. Hopefully, the redistricting and the consolidation will help fix it. Reducing support services, we're going to have school closures possible, staff layoffs and elimination of programs, which this is going to affect our children's education and their ability to compete in an increasingly competitive world. We can't afford to compromise the quality of education that our children deserve in Old Bridge. The quality of our school system directly affects our home values in our town. So a strong school system is going to attract families, which is going to drive the demand for housing and township like it's been doing, and it's going to increase our property values. Insurance schools are well-funded, protects our children's education, and of course, our property investments. Homeowners in Old Bridge definitely have a personal stake in this when maintaining a high-quality school system, as yes, it benefits our children, but it also protects our property investments. Other towns in New Jersey have faced similar budget cuts. So when local boards of education could not agree on budgets, the state intervened, which ended up either closing schools, raising taxes, and even both in some towns. So they were making the decisions for their town. By making a cohesive decision, we ourselves get to regain and retain the local control of the future of our district. So I urge you for about the long-term benefits of investing in our schools and the future of community. When in choosing to increase taxes, if so, make sure as responsibly. Definitely super comb through the budgets if needed. And I hope that somehow, whatever decision is made, not everybody's going to be happy, but it's something we can live with. Thank you.
Is that good? Hi. My name is Michelle Cordero. I'm a mom of two elementary school-age kids. Usually, I'm a very organized, prepared person, so the fact that I'm speaking kind of off cuff is a little uncomfortable for me. I decided to come here last minute after hearing some of the things that were going on with the budget. In addition to being a mom of two school-age kids, I'm also a psychotherapist. I've worked for bureaucratic systems for years. I've worked for bureaucratic systems for years. I worked in foster care for 10 years, making me probably the oldest staff member in the agency I worked for, and nobody lasts that long. And I know in a lot of bureaucratic environments, they're very top-heavy, and they don't often listen to the workers about the needs for change. And I think it's important for the board to speak directly to the teachers and find out what's gonna impact our kids. Like I said, I have two kids who go to the school system here, and one of my kids is a big sports kid. And sports are important for many, many reasons. They keep kids out of trouble. They keep them caring about their academics because they can't participate in the sport if their academics aren't good. It's important. My son plays on two high-level competitive travel soccer teams here in New Jersey. It's one of the reasons we moved here five years ago. And anybody who knows me knows I am proud to say I live in Old Bridge. I love this town. I don't ever wanna leave it. But we have to care about the future of our kids. My son's dream is to play soccer for the high school, and that's great, but the chances of him playing major league soccer are minus 1%. His academics have to be what's most important. We have to make sure our teachers have what they can to teach these kids. My son was in a gifted program in New York. I'm disappointed with the education that he's gotten here in the last year. He had a wonderful teacher in fourth grade in a smaller class who pushed him to reach his potential, and he did. And this year, his class is packed, overwhelmed, and her, his teacher spends her days screaming and breaking up fights. That's not what we need for these kids. Not every kid goes to college, and I get that, having worked in foster care, and we do need programs for those kids. But those are the minority of the kids that we should expect from this town. This is a town of working people who love their children, and every one of them should be given an opportunity to strive for the potential to go to college. So while I think cosmetology is a great program, it should be first on the chopping block if kids don't have chairs, or if classes are 35-deep in a middle school. We really need to think about our priorities if we want our kids to be successful. So I just wonder, as the board, have you looked at the budget, and I'm assuming yes, line by line, to see where some cuts could come in? Does one department need an extreme amount of funding for supplies and another department gets nothing? Do we need 78 supervisors of toilet paper? I mean, we really have to look at the budget and see where are the benefits gonna be long-term. All of our children are involved here, and this is a cutthroat world. They need academics first. Thank you.
My name is Irene Ernest, and most of you knows I'm a mom of three. Two graduated from Old Bridge, the third one is in a middle school, and he tried his best to get his benefits because when, and I'm a bus driver too, so I got affected for all ways as a cutting from my income and asking for more taxes, and I can't debate private because I got a lot of messages saying, "Save Old Bridge children! Talk to the president! Talk to the House of Representatives, the senators! Save the kids!" And we out of a lot. When we bought the house, I said, "Let's go out of Old Bridge. It's expensive." My kids told me, "No, we got a lot of benefits from the schools, so we want our brother to get the same benefits." But now, every day, cut, cut, cut. And I'm driving the special-need kids who can't go out most of the time with their parents. And Mr. Tiddidino, he said, "I'm responsible for the kids, not qualified for college. Not all the kids in Old Bridge qualify for college to complete their education." You can't imagine how they touch the paper and they see the stuff, and they say, "This is pencil, this is ball, this is their window for life, and you wanna cut those? Cut the programs? Take the time? If you made high school half-time, half-day, where do those kids go? They stuck in prison at home. No one take them out." But their program, I'm the one who drive them for two years, and I'm running between them. They take the stuff, they try in the glasses, they have a life. So it's not fair to take from the regular kids their sport, suffer the parents, and even those special-need kids, to stuck them between the walls. Sometimes the parents bring the kids to school to go these programs. Have fun. I'm taking them to the parks, to the library, to the stores, to know what's going on around them. Don't block them behind the walls. It's not fair. And it's not fair for our regular kids to be in the street, to don't have any sport because my income's $10. Now, you're taking tax, you're taking my extra income, you're taking a lot of stuff we need to bring to school. At the beginning, I need to get the pencils, tissue, like the teacher said, I have a big budget for the beginning of the year. So what? How we can live? As a parent, as an employee, I count us and the teachers and all the coaches too to be affected by cutting all this sport. We are superheroes for Old Bridge. I'm proud. I'm, like he's saying, I'm super proud to be Old Bridge superheroes. We're doing great. We never give shorthand to help hold the system. We are one team, so we need you guys to appreciate us like a parent, like a staff, like the special-need kids. They deserve more from us, not cutting them and keep them in the dark. They deserve more. That's enough what they suffer from. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no one else, I'm gonna close the hearing of the residents. You wanna respond to anything?
I will start with Ms. Ettinger's email or letter. We do have a grant writer who does seek grant opportunities in the form of federal and state grants, but also any private grants that are out there as well. I know in the past year, we've applied for many of them, even through a school safety and security grant. We're not always awarded them, but we have been awarded a great many of them, thanks to her ability to get these grants done, many of which have really given opportunities for our student learning. We do have sponsorships, and we work through, even our student learning labs, those were in the media centers at the elementary schools, those were funded by DuPont. That was through going out to DuPont and looking at their grants and seeing what they were looking for and meeting those needs, and they sponsored with us those. We've had MRA put together labs here and so forth. So we do look for those as well. I know we've had meetings in executive session about lawsuits and the ability to join lawsuits, the financial risk versus reward of a lawsuit. Lawsuits have been filed on the school-state funding formula, it's transparency. It's one of those things where you don't need 50 districts to file a lawsuit on the state's funding formula transparency, because if the state, if those districts win, the state's not gonna just release the funding formula to just those, it goes to every district and opens up the formula. But so far, no one has won that battle with the state. I do wanna address, and I thank all of everyone for participating and giving their comments. They are very meaningful. I took a lot of notes. Some of the things that can this board and this administration can address in the immediate budget, but some are gonna take time and a lot of work. I wanna look into especially the desks issue at the middle schools, first time I'm hearing that. I know the enrollment is down at the middle school as compared to years before, so they should have desks. Are they new? No, not always new. When I was a principal there, I went to a neighboring district that was closing a school, and as they were getting rid of desks that were less than five years old, I was putting them in the back of my truck and bringing them here. So I know you have to somehow be creative in how you get them. We'll take a look at those and see what we can do there. Enrollment-wise, there's a lot of comments about enrollment. We can't override enrollment. Enrollment isn't policy. It is policy for anyone who has looked at 2312. You can find it on our district website. I can give you the numbers right now so you know, and if you know of anywhere we are violating enrollment, class size, you can let us know. Kindergarten, we are maximums 25 students in a class. Grade one and two, 28 students in a class. Grades three, four, and five, well, grade three through 12 is actually 30 students in a class. I don't know except for maybe the high school where we actually get to that level of 30. Again, Dr. Hoker, I don't know if you have any of that at your disposal, it's unfair me to point at you at that time, but I know we don't have that in the elementary schools three, four, or five. And our sweet spot is, and some of the studies show, will show you the famous Tennessee study, that there's no difference between a class size of like 16 to 18 to 22. That's actually the sweet spot. You want anywhere from 16 to 22 students in a class, I think is great for students' benefit and teacher benefit, and we'd like to be in that area. I know with the younger grades that we get concerned or nervous when we even get close to the 28 number of grades one and two, and we try not to go there. The only ways, the only places a minimum is high school, grade nine through 12, and that is 15. So again, the administration is bound by these, this policy on class size, and policy is driven by Board of Education. I know our board looks at policy reviews all the time, so we don't have the ability to exceed these maximums, but if it's the will of the community, the stakeholders in the future to lower those class-size numbers, then I encourage you to attend a policy meeting, and we can have that conversation there. Who heads up policy now?
Policy meeting tomorrow.
Policy meeting tomorrow? I don't know if something that we wanna look at, but it definitely would have an impact financially as well. So I just wanted to address that, and again, thank you for everyone who's sharing your points of view.
Any other comments? Some notes that I wrote about talking to staff. We did send out surveys, especially from the Technology Committee last calendar year, asking the elementary, "Do you need the devices in kindergarten one and two?" Because some of us thought, you know, they're not really used, and we can, you know, utilize the money elsewhere. The staff came back and said, "No, they do use it." So it wasn't us as board saying, making that decision. We did go to the people with the boots on the ground, with the staff members, and asking. As far as being stakeholders, all nine of us are stakeholders, you know, we're paying the same taxes you are. So that was the other comment I wrote down, and we do have the programs for everyone from the trades all the way up to the college-bound kids. And as far as challenging, you know, you have the challenge program in the elementary and the middle school, and then the early college program and the AP classes in the high school. So any other comments from board members?
Just want to add a couple of comments. All feedback given by all of you all is very valid. We have to strike a balance, that's the key. Historically, we have not done that, right? And it's time to do that. And hopefully, in the next strategic planning, the initiatives which probably we will share, you know, in a few or later in the agenda, we have to put all of this into the picture, but we are not ready to make any drastic cuts or to make any changes because we're not planned towards that. So yes, we need to continue to do some of them, but hopefully not forever. Thank you.
Yes, a question from Mr. Wydell. So the budget has, because the budget that's proposed on the resolution isn't line item. It goes to certain accounts. So when we talked about the massive cuts with the kindergarten and the half-day high school, that was millions, major amounts of money, but things that are less than a million, things like assistant coaches or the one-to-one devices if possible, even if we do approve the budget as-is, the increase as-is, would we be able to move those out of those specific areas? Because I would consider desks and supplies part of a capital, or if it's any improvements to the classrooms, et cetera.
Ultimately, the budget that is adopted is a blueprint. That's what it is, and I explained it in '24, '25 when I gave that presentation last year. The budget is ultimately a blueprint. Throughout the course of the year, you can transfer funds in and out, and so discussion can be had, but again, when you're making these major decisions, it impacts, you know, far more things than, you know, every, just the nine board members. There is a larger decision. So ultimately, yes, we can. If the board says you don't want to have one item, it can not be spent or expended or can be transferred out. The reason the agenda, or resolution rather, is the way it is, is because any change between the tentative budget and the final adopted budget has to be noted. So that is why it's, those are just the specific account lines in which there was a actual financial change, fiscal change. They have to be there because that was the change between our public hearing last Tuesday to today. So that is, again, it is a blueprint that can be changed at a later date. They don't have to be extended, expended. You can transfer money from one spot to another, but ultimately, you're approving a total budget, and then all the lines within are up for potential change.
Because I think most of the things mentioned is probably, especially supplies, you know, one to two million, it's not gonna be the whole 20 million of change, and especially considering the timeline the state has given us. We basically had to come to consensus in executive session and then basically advertise it to the public for the public hearing, and there wasn't a lot of feedback like we had last week after we did the public hearing. So I think increasing it the way as-is and then working with the stakeholders to, after we have the blueprint, to basically delegate where the funds go in a more efficient way to the public. I think that's the correct way to go. That wasn't, I'm just directing that to everyone.
Understood, yep.
Yep, thank you.
I just have a quick question. I know I brought this up in Personnel the other day, but Mr. Wydell, is there a way for us to see all the programs that we offer? And you don't have to do it, we don't have to do this right this second, because I know this is gonna be a lengthy report, but like, all the programs that Old Bridge offers, the amount it costs to run those programs, and how many people are in these programs? Because if we're running programs that are costing the district money that maybe are, have one or two, you know, attendees in it, is there a way it's maybe we can save money that way? Cutting out programs that aren't utilized as much as some other ones. Also, my second question goes back to the middle school summer program. So from my knowledge, this middle school summer program is for kids that are at risk of failing. What are the requirements to pass the middle school program? And if there is no test or ending, I guess, report, let's say, is that really efficient for us to keep running a program that we don't even know if the kids are getting use out of or using to the full extent?
So I'll defer the middle school summer program to either Dr. Tuie, Dr. Hoker, Dave. Again, I don't know the specifics on that, the educational portion of it, which is the most important piece.
So the middle school summer program is for students who have already failed. So it's either students who have had a significant lack of attendance or students who have failed one or multiple courses. So for example, if a student fails math for the year, they have to take the math course over the summer. As part of the requirement, there is an attendance requirement. It is a project-based activity. Most of the students do not wanna be there. It is the summer, and they participate begrudgingly in some cases. At our last committee meeting for curriculum, it was discussed about potentially charging for that program, and that is on the agenda for tomorrow night. If that is the will of the committee, then we can put that on the agenda for next week and have a nominal fee to ensure that the students are more actively engaged in the activities during the course of summer.
One of the things you have to look at when you say efficiency-wise of a summer school program, that it's also a deterrent for students failing. Not every student has, for whatever reason, the support or reinforcement at home that failing is not good, that failing has repercussions. So when they have to attend a summer program, it's a deterrent to not fail to do well because the cost of a student failing and having to re-educate that student a following year because they have to return to that grade level is, goes way beyond the cost of running the program, because now you're educating groups of students who would graduate out within the 12-year model to now you're, you're having them going through an extra year or two years. So those are some of the purposes for it.
Additionally, many of the students who are involved in the middle school program have some sort of socioeconomic or difficult home life, and therefore, I had one student last year, she said that she came to the program because it was something to do, and that's more of the students who participate in the program than not. Additionally, please look up statistics. I don't have them off the top of my head, but the, when you retain a student in middle school, the chance of them graduating high school significantly drops, and I can get that information for you, exact numbers, maybe that would help in the decision, but it is very important not only to encourage the students to participate, but also make it a summer program which they are okay to come with, because otherwise, if they don't show up after the first two days, they're not gonna pass the program regardless.
Dr. Tuie, in preparation for tomorrow, can we also... Dr. Tuie, in preparation for tomorrow, can we also, rough numbers of what percentage of students coming if you charge, if we as a district chose to charge, would not be applicable to that because they're on free and reduced lunch?
I can pull the numbers from last year, just to give you a ballpark.
Yeah, just as a rough, so that's part of the conversation.
Yep, about a hundred and eighty students participated last year, but I'll have those numbers for your morning.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, so out of the one eighty, what would have been on free and reduced? Because then, if you're only charging two kids out of the hundred and eighty, like...
And in, in regards to the first question from Christina, i- it's going to be, that will take some time if you go through all the programs, because it's a joint effort based on, again, I am the school business administrator, but I can't speak to every single educational program. So when we talk about that, I would defer to my colleagues here, and then we, we go over, okay, how many teachers does it take to run that program? What's their current salary? Then you take into benefits, and we're not supposed to be providing necessarily, I know it's, it's public, you don't give the names, because we don't want to ever have to cut or reduce or eliminate a program based on the names of the teachers that are in there. So that, that would have to be, eh, you know, excused from there. But we, we'd give the cost of basically salaries, benefit packages, and then whatever supplies maybe are budgeted for that program. It is a, a lengthy, um, discussion, but as we talk about long-term planning in the future, probably one that we will have to have, but it will take a, a joint effort from the entire team, so.
And one of the comments that, you know, even, because it kind of relates to, uh, Ms. Mazone's question about programs and the value of how many students are in it and what impact, you know, I caution the board, and there was a comment about it, you know, that has not easy to just say, well, we're not going to have a cosmetology program. Why? Because you can have kids who graduate from our schools, and they have taken AP courses, and they've gone to prestigious universities, and their jobs can be outsourced within a snap of a hat, a snap of a finger, that they went to all these schools, but a cosmetology degree will never be outsourced. You can never send your hair to a foreign country to have it done.
People love, missed us during COVID.
If you, the flowbee, the flowbee was the closest thing to outsourcing haircuts. But if you have a skill set to do cosmetology, or work in the crafts or trades, you will always be employable, because you can never be sent out of coun- out of the country for someone else to take your job, especially in two thousand twenty-five, when so much is sent out of the country. Many of our jobs are done electronically or through a global platform.
Question, because it, it, you know, again, I'm a hairdresser, so I'll, you, keep using cosmetology. One thing is the VOTEC schools have it. When a student goes to a vocational school, that still costs us as a district money? Enough for busing or?
Not any, well, transportation, yes.
Or security?
We, we do pay for transportation, but, eh, uh, Middlesex County is one of the few, I mean, maybe the only county in the state, I'm going to say a few, that the county freeholders pay the tuition of our students who go to, um, the magnet schools in our academy.
But what about the security?
What do you mean, the security?
Like, do, when we, some of the, when we pay other schools, like, some of the kids go to private schools, don't we pay a stipend for security at that school also, like?
Well, we get, no, like, the local, um, the local schools, the, um, pro-kill schools, the state, the non-public, they give us their portion of their security aid, the technology aid, and our job is to help divvy it up to them and kind of, to kind of look, look over the funds for it, not...
It essentially comes to us in state aid, and we pay it right back out in, in an expense. But any of the, as Dave was saying, the magnet schools, um, that is, in Middlesex County, education that can be provided, but we do have to transport those students.
Any other comments on that part? There's nothing on policy, um, curriculum and professional development? I had a question on item nine, um, iPlay. Is it, can we explain the purpose of iPlay being a field trip? Like, if it's a physics class going, and to talk about the roller coasters, I get it, but I don't know what age group we're approving this for.
Yeah, so I looked into that. Um, it, I believe it's for the, um, special education population to go to, um, as a reward for their activities, right? But I will get that, um, exact rationale for that trip for you, uh, tomorrow.
All right, thank you. Anyone else on curriculum? Finance, I need a motion for, hold on, we're going pages. Resolution, item one through ten?
Done, we'll make a motion, Madam President. I would like to separate item two and item eight for discussion purposes.
Ms. Mazone will second, and I guess I agree, I want to separate item eight, please.
So, are we discussing one, three, four, five, six, seven, nine, ten, eleven? Any discussion on those items? Okay, um, item number two for discussion?
Yes, Madam President, um, quite frankly, at this point, you know, since we are hurting financially, and we're trying to piece together our budget, how could the township, how could they consciously ask us to pay forty thousand dollars a year to use bays for our transportation? We have shared services. So if we want to play tit for tat, we can play tit for tat with the township. But in this budget environment, how are they asking us for forty thousand dollars for one-year lease? I understand that, you know, they have to make money, but you know what? Due to our unfortunate circumstances with the state, there should, should be some consideration. Now, I know that one percent of our budget, one percent plus of our budget goes to township for shared services. And I'm not going to get into specifics, but one percent, two million-plus dollars goes to their coffers for services that they provide to us. So I would like to table this, so that we can get into this a little bit more deeply, uh, and understand exactly what revenue we receive from the town, and what expenditures we pay to the town. I think if the board and the public see the difference, I think there'd be a very, very, very different discussion here. So, I think we should go back to the town and ask them, based upon our situation with our monies, that there should be some sort of concession, maybe some leniency, a little forgiveness here. Forty thousand dollars is a lot of money, and those bays, what are they going to do? Are they going to lease it to another township to use them? Come on, we're, we're, we're partners in this township, and for them to ask to take forty thousand dollars out of our budget to give it to them on something that they're not really using, I think that's a little disingenuous. And I think that we should have a, 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 a larger dialogue with the township to understand everything. And I would like, David, I'd like to see exactly the revenue we receive from the township, and I would like to know the expenditures that we give the township. Because I know the expenditures far outweigh what we give them than we receive in return. And we know we give the township a lot of services, especially to the rec- recreation department. So, I would like to do that, and I would like this to be tabled, because you know what, the lease doesn't start until July. So there's times, there's time to deliberate and to understand this lease a little bit more, to see if we can come to a conclusion and understanding.
So you're making a motion to table?
Yes, I'm making a motion to table.
Is, this amount, like, what were we paying last year? Like, where's this come from? Can we?
Says it right there, three thousand dollars per month from twenty-two to twenty-five. It was a three-year agreement. There would be an increase, this is a one-year. Um, I had a, a conversation with the township. Their costs are increasing too, right? We ultimately pay for these two bases, but they cover the electrical, they cover the heat, they cover, you know, all the, it's, the entire building is there. So, there was a conversation with the township that, um, was had, and I will leave some of the specifics on that conversation. I'll talk to, uh, an executive session if we need to, because there are some long-term impacts on it. But it ultimately was a, an increase. But there is another item for shared services, I believe, in transportation, where we get fifty thousand dollars in revenue for this year, and that was increased. And we have a shared service in which we get our custodian, uh, coverage, and it's, I negotiate with the township, showed them costs, and it's higher now than, than ever before in revenue coming to us. We're never going to compete with the security that we pay, you know, to the township. That, that is a critical component piece. You know, there is stuff where we have athletic agreements where we don't get charged for the ice time when our hockey team plays. If we need some salt sometimes for our roads and our parking locks, the township doesn't charge us. So, there are those nominal things. We have, I've been working with the BA, our township, uh, council, or township council as well as the BA, we are trying to put more and more in writing, so that it's there. And it's something that both the BA and I have talked to, that we both are, you know, advocates for, get it in writing. But, um, this would be a nominal piece. We need a place to go, transportation-wise, you know? We need a place right now, in July, it, you know, we're not going to find a place in, in two months. So that would be my only, I, I totally get, I know you asked for it, please, you know, put it in writing if you can. I know, I get comments or questions from the board. If, if, the board often writes to me. Do I get back to you guys for, for those? You, I get back as quick as I can, always get back. I, I know it's, it's, I write my notes here. If you can just put it in writing to me, I work on it. That, that's kind of just my method. I have a huge inbox, I have a huge notes, my desk is a mess. It's just the reality of, of life right now for me. So I'm trying my damnedest to get to everything. But please, I, I will work on it. Just know there are some rev- there is another revenue item on here as well.
Mr. Dunn, have you put in the request for a shared services meeting to be on the calendar?
Uh, I think I have, and I was told that there was some dialogue going on between, I guess, the president and vice president with, uh, members of the council or the mayor's office?
Well, I, I said last month, I had, uh, Dave, David and I had a meeting with Mary, the council president and the BA, and I shared that information, but nothing went beyond that. It was more of trying to get cross-invitation and more involvement both ways. But, um, if we, can we put the request in for?
And again, I'm sorry to say this, but if you, for anyone that's had a meeting request, if you put it in writing,
That's why I said put it in email.
I work on getting that. Sal has asked for meetings in writing, and multiple people have asked for me, food service, meetings in writing. That is kind of the way I operate, unfortunately, for you guys, sorry. Get it in writing, I, I start working on it.
Mr. Dunn, if you could just send him the email then?
Yeah, I'll send the email, I have no problem with that.
Thank you.
But I, that's want to, uh, table this, it's July. I think we have some time to vet this in the executive session, to understand fully exactly, you know, what our expenditures are and what our revenue is. I think that's a fair question. Black and white numbers don't lie, and I understand the town does do stuff for us, but we do a lot of stuff for the town also. And I know that Mr. Waddell just said, well, expenses have risen regarding, you know, the bays over at the DPW, I hear that. But our expenses have risen too, to keep our lights on and our heat on between three and six for aftercare. So, I get it, I get it, but I just want full transparency, because I've never, I've been on the board for a long time, and I've never gotten full transparency on what the agreements are. And I think that's very important, so we're all educated, because quite frankly, I know a lot of those side agreements. I know what's going on. And I'm not going to share it, because, again, like David said, this should be in the executive session, okay? I think we should understand the board, so we can understand what we are responsible for and what the town's responsible, because I believe shared services is an equal, should be fifty-fifty, not ninety-ten. So, that's all I'm asking for, and I'll put everything in writing to Mr. Waddell, so he has it. And I do expect the president and the vice president and the team to get involved with the town. Let's get a meeting together, and let's discuss this. That's all I'm asking, because everyone's saying, hey, our budget is out of crazy, it's going out of whack. You know, we're, we're asking for more money, the, the, the residents are here, you know, sharing their concerns about our budget. So we should have a full transparency, what we're paying the township and what we're getting in return. Because you know what, the taxpayers should know. So, that's the transparency I'm looking for. I'm asking the table. If the board doesn't want to table it, that's their prerogative. Uh, it's not due until July, today's May, we have a month, we can decipher this and, and absorb it. And I think that, uh, it's not a unreasonable request. Thank you.
Need to see if there's a second on it, Mr. Dunn's motion.
Giordano, second.
Motion, second. Vote, um, vote on the motion to table.
Can we have a roll call on the motion to, to table, please? Just number two?
No, give you a second to set up.
All right, a roll call to table, resolution number two on finance. Jodri?
Yes.
Mazone?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Vangetason?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Dan Tuno?
Yes.
Okay, motion number two is tabled.
Item number eight for discussion?
Yes. Okay, so, I was going to chime in after all of the hearing of the residents, then I decided to just wait for, um, separating this and, and discussing the vote. So, um, I have some notes in front of me, just because I don't want to miss anything that I want to say. Um, it's important to me to share where my mind is at on this whole thing. It's been a really lengthy process. A really, a process that just got deeper than I ever imagined. I knew that when I signed up to be a board member, that we were going to be put in really tough situations. I knew what I was getting myself into. Um, I think, though, that this is probably the hardest decision that I've had to make yet as a board member. Whenever a big topic comes up, like the budget, uh, there are a million different ways to slice it. As you heard here tonight, as we've heard through emails and conversations with, um, each other, with, um, staff members, with community members, and everybody values different pieces of our very robust program here from a different vantage point. So, you know, what's really important to one person might not really be important to the next person. And everything that everybody has said in an email, or has gotten up here to speak about in conversations that we've had as board members, they're all really important, and I can't even say that I disagree with any of them. There's just so many different ways to look at it. Um, and all the reasons that each group offers makes total sense. So, no matter how I vote tonight, or anybody votes tonight, I'm never going to be able to, to please everybody. It's not my role, right, to please people. My job is to do what's best for our students and community as a whole. Some will disagree with my decision, um, and some will not, and that's just the nature of the job. So I would like to give a little insight into my process in coming to a final decision. So a few months ago, we find out we're in an eighteen-million-dollar hole, and, you know, in order to maintain everything, we need an extra eighteen million dollars. And, you know, my first reaction was, oh my God, like, how did we get here? And, okay, so clearly we've got to make, we've got to make some cuts, right? No one wants to see cuts. I don't want to see cuts. If you own a business and your budget decreases, you have to make difficult decisions to keep your business going. Um, if you lose your job, God forbid, or you have to take a pay cut, you have to figure out where to make cuts in your household. As a school district, we're in a slightly different spot, because we can just raise taxes to cover our deficit. Sounds like an easy fix to some people, um, and some days to me it was too, um, but it's just not as simple as that. While I believe we would all be delusional to think that our taxes will not increase every year, because everything else does, I, I firmly believe that the rate in which we have been increasing taxes is not sustainable for our community. We all said that going up the nine-point-nine percent last year was a one-time thing. Well, clearly it wasn't, because look at where we are right now. We are proposing almost a twenty percent tax increase this year. At a previous meeting, I spoke about how this predicament that we are in falls on the state, and I stand by that. The state of New Jersey has put us in an awful situation, and wants to put this burden on the local taxpayers. So I just came up with a couple of stats that I wanted to share, just for your thoughts tonight. New Jersey ranks number eight with the highest state sales tax. New Jersey ranks number five with the highest state income tax. And New Jersey ranks number one and has the highest property tax rate in the nation. So just kind of let that sit with you. Where's all this money going? State aid this year for us is about twenty-three-point-six million dollars, uh, which is a decrease from last year. As we all know, we went down three percent, uh, which was about seven-hundred-thirty-eight thousand dollars. Newark is slated to receive one-point-three-two-six billion dollars this year in state aid. That is a seventy-five-million-dollar increase from last year. The disparity is, is crazy to me. The state's telling us that they need an extra seventy-five million dollars to run their district, while bigger than ours. But if you do the math, and you take our state aid this year and divide it by the about eight thousand students that we have in state aid, that equates to about two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars per student, two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty, even if you want to round up to three thousand. If you do the same math with Newark's state aid, that equates to about thirty-one thousand dollars a child. The, the difference is just, it, it's immense. I understand that this process started and is done in Newark and other urban school districts to balance some inequities. I used to teach in Perth Amboy, and we needed that extra money. But to what extent? How is this fair? How is this leveling the playing field? It isn't. It's, in my mind, having the opposite effect. It's excessive, and it's unacceptable. With all this being said, I cannot be complicit in the state's awful, unfair, and inequitable funding tactics. I refuse to be one of their minions. If we keep saying yes, then we just keep enabling them, and I just can't do it. On top of this, there isn't even legislation saying that we can go above the two percent. The state is, as Mr. Sittadino said, uh, last week, uh, building their plane while, while, while flying it at the same time. Um, and nothing is truer. I mean, that is exactly how I view it. I do, lastly, want everyone to know that the board- Um, I do lastly want everyone to know that the board has spent a great deal of time discussing numerous ways to attack this budget. We have all worked tirelessly, taken time away from our families, rearranged schedules, um, to find the right answers. There are none. I can't even fault any board members who want to vote yes to this budget, because a large part of me wants to vote yes for this budget. It's not that I don't want to keep our programs or support our staff and support our students, I want to grow and deepen our programs, but at what cost? I would love to see towns in the same situation come together to fight the state. I would love for all the Board of Ed members here and on all these other boards to show the state that our students are not pawns in this game that they're playing that has no rules. Even to this point, tomorrow is the deadline for the state to approve our application, and they haven't even bothered to respond yet to us or other districts. I'm done, I'm just done with all the antics. So I just wanted everybody to know my reasoning for not supporting this budget. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to go over, I I know people asked us if we went line by line, and we did. We had a line by line budget, and we tried to look through everything that we possibly could. Um, but I just wanted to go over since, um, every year, obviously, our budget's been being cut. Um, and since twenty eighteen, I have a list of, um, the cuts that we have made already to positions and programs in the district. And I just wanted to go over some of them. So for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year, we had a reduction of about eighty-five district-wide positions, two central level, two central level admin, one building level admin, twenty-seven noon hour supervisors. We got rid of ten secretaries, ten par professionals, assistant coaching positions. Um, and there's a whole bunch of other certified staff that we got rid of, district librarians, planetarium. We reduced uh, ten elementary sections, three elementary-related arts sections, and elementary guidance counselor. Um, we moved supervisors from twelve month to ten month. We cut transportation runs at the high school and middle school. We eliminate, we eliminated Spanish from grade six and seven at middle schools. We removed family consumer science from middle school elective offerings and reduced instructional supplies. Twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one, we had extra money for COVID, so we didn't have any, um, any cuts those years because we did have, uh, money in our budget to do things. From twenty-one to twenty-two, we eliminated supervisor of guidance. Twenty-two to twenty-three, we eliminated two middle school science SEL positions. We eliminated two middle school social studies SEL positions. We eliminated, uh, one planetar, another planetarium, a media specialist. We eliminated two ELA high school positions, two high school science teachers, one art teacher at the high school, a high school interventionist, um, one elementary music position, a preschool teacher, two preschool par professionals, a bathroom par professional we eliminated, um, BCBAs, behaviorists, what else? Then in twenty-three, twenty-four, we made additional cuts to employee benefits, maintenance, and transportation. We reduced two instructional coaches, we reduced one district nurse position, one elementary school interventionist position. We reduced three middle school, uh, team members from Salk, one from Sandberg, one special ed teacher, and eleven total staff. We reduced textbook line items, um, we eliminated after-school transportation, we reduced the Olbridge High School Guidance Secretary, we reduced transfer, the transportation secretary, we reduced the central secretary, we reduced the technician, we eliminated a copy specialist that was a secretary, we reduced substitute costs, instructional supplies, we eliminated middle school subject area coordinators in math, social studies, ELA, related arts, science, PE, special education. And we eliminated, um, eleven staff members for elementary technology building support. So for people who think we haven't been eliminating anything or or going line by line and trying to get rid of things, this is what we've done. And even, um, I know Ms. Patterson said that she's noticed a difference in education from her daughter to her son. Well, these are the things that have been being cut over the years because the state has been been cutting our budget. There's nothing left, we've been be able, we've been able to plug holes with reserves, there's no more reserves, there's nothing. We don't have anything left. So we're we're already operating, you know, on on much reduced staff and programs. And we still need to give students in Olbridge a good education, which, you know, is more than just basic reading and writing. So I just wanted to share that information.
Anyone else?
Okay.
I'll say something, if I can, in my voice. Um, I'm in, I'm in whole agreement, um, with the gentleman who talked about, you know, collaborating amongst districts to fight the man, the big bully in the room, which is the state. That's important, I mean, we're just, like Elena just said, you know, just rolling over, just accepting, uh, our fate. But you kind of have to control what you can control. I look at the potential, uh, tax increase as like an insurance policy. You know, you're insuring the fact that the students aren't victims, the staffing, the education, the future. Just like you insure your car, your home, your health insurance, which we've all opened those envelopes and saw the increase in prices, you're going to pay it. You're going to pay to keep your house insured, your car insured, your health insurance to keep your body insured, so you're not going to compromise that. But yet, we'd be willing to compromise the education of the students. So another gentleman had had made reference of controlling your fate. And unfortunately, none of us up here agree with what the state is doing. Um, but if we have an opportunity to control and continue, I couldn't even fathom cuts and how how house values going down. I didn't even think it was an option to not support it, but it it sounds like it could be. Before we do go into that, I was wondering if Mr. Waddell or Chris can just highlight the repercussions of not supporting the budget? Uh, what that we discussed in the back room.
Do you want me to start?
Sure, Chris, thank you.
So we have very little guidance, as Dave was saying, as Elena quoted Dave so accurately, the the state is building a plane while flying it. We, last year, we suddenly had a law that was dropped on us like two weeks before you had an opportunity, quote unquote, to vote for a nine point nine increase. We at least had two pages of law there, we're down two pages from that this year. It's really an unbelievable situation. But we have learned from last year, and last year, a couple of districts, you know, the the litigation keeps coming up. Uh, Tom's River is leading that charge, and it's been extremely unsuccessful. I I'm happy to make the fees. I I don't know that it's a good use of taxpayer money, because tilting at windmills, even when they're really nasty awful windmills, may not be a good expenditure of public dollars. With that said, if the board says we're suing, I'm suing. So we'll get back to you. The board, but I hear you, but I hear you. Um, with regard to what happens if this budget is defeated, last year, Tom's River and Jackson defeated their budgets. They've defeated them unanimously, they are not state-operated school districts, so they have every authority to defeat a budget. And they did. And unlike the old days where budgets, if defeated, were appealed to the township committees, budgets now go straight to the state. This is a theme, everything goes straight to the state. Uh, and Tom's River and Jackson were told last year that, thank you for your zero-nine vote on your budget, your budget is approved, you will spend money, you will increase your tax base by nine point nine percent. It is a matter of public record, the the state budget software. And at this point, the Department of Education has template budgets for everybody, including Olbridge. And they're not complete, they're almost entirely blank. But there are a couple of boxes that are filled in. One of the boxes is local tax levy. Your budget box says thirty million four hundred forty-nine thousand four hundred and forty dollars, which as you who have been paying attention know, is your maximum authority to go to state-defined adequacy. The point is, if your budget goes down, not only could your budget be imposed at the number that's being considered here, it could be imposed at thirty million. Thirty million hit to the low, the local Olbridge taxpayers. That would take it out of your control certainly, and it would take it out of the board member's control. So that is the danger here. Every board member, and I think Elena said it really well, there's there's no good answer here, but there's jeopardy either way. Obviously, those eighteen million dollar cuts are scary to board members, and they're the ones who are voting on this. But the idea of it coming out of your hands into somebody else's hands and taking more money from the taxpayers than anyone intends is a serious downside. And tha- that's what we previewed in executive session with every intention of coming out and telling you the same thing. So there is jeopardy here, there is jeopardy on the decision going someplace where no one in this room has supported it going. So a- and I can't say that's what will happen either, because there is no law for me to read from. There is no regulation or guideline. There's a series of memos that say, here's what you need to do by tomorrow morning. Uh, we we, we get updates from the state every couple of days, but not today, because the deadline's not till tomorrow. It's a terrible situation to be in, but that's where we are.
Pretty clear of what I was going to say.
Yes. Okay, so, um, as I said, so even if we did delay until tomorrow, we'd have to have an emergency meeting, even if we did do that. And not saying we should do that, but in general going forward, there's a lot more emphasis on cutting the luxuries, where for years and last few months, there hasn't been that initiative. So as mentioned before, this is a blueprint. So as we approve this, hopefully we can move things such as new sports equipment or, hold on, uh, technology, Promethean boards, uh, one-on-one devices, things like that could be moved towards desks, uh, teacher supplies. So that should be the goal going forward. Like I said, over the last few months, and even the board, when we discussed this in executive session, we had a consensus, I would say, to keep a lot of those, quote, luxuries. So I think going forward, the board, after the public speaking, has a different opinion on those things. So Mr. Waddell is correct that we just have to have these on a line item, and as we go through the year, it's our discretion whether to actually spend it or fund it or move the.
I cannot answer that because in regards to the application, we had to put, appropriate the amounts to certain lines and put a reasoning for how it meets thorough and efficient education. Now, because there is no guidance, really truly, the state may come in and audit to make sure you see, you know, what you put on the application is followed through, or they may not. So I cannot answer that specific question in regards to the items on the application, which is the twenty-three total million, uh, dollars in expenditures. As of which I did presented in the, uh, budget hearing, eighteen or seventeen million nine hundred forty-six thousand seven something was in the application to get back everything we had cut, and then there were some additional expenditures that the board discussed and were agreed upon to include in the application.
Okay. And, uh, something that the state has been doing, the, I've seen, sure you've seen commercials, Millsex County, the Stay NJ program, anyone sixty-five and older, they're reimbursing fifty percent of property taxes, up to six thousand five hundred dollars. That wasn't around last year, that's around this year. So that's something for the seniors, parents with students in the district are benefiting from the fully funding of the programs that do exist. And even the ones that don't have children, the loss of property values that would occur from some of these cuts would be way more than the increase in tax in most cases. And I've been seeing houses for sale and people going way above the asking price, bidding higher and higher because they know the value of property in Olbridge, and I think by voting yes on this budget, we're maintaining that. As I said, um, I'm usually against the grain when it comes to what the state says, and I do think going forward, the public should have more say on what luxuries we should cut going forward. But I think this tax increase is a good blueprint for that. So whether you have kids in the district, whether you don't have kids, you're looking to sell your residence, or if you're a senior citizen that doesn't have kids but has a fixed income, they're taken care of as of now. Uh, the deadline to file that Stay NJ is October thirty-first. So those are things that weren't a consideration last year, and the fact that we're taking care of everyone, even though it's painful now, I think it's the correct decision. And I, like I said, I I responded to those that emailed me, um, very open to any cuts that they have. And I think once we do have the budget proposed, and, I mean, sorry, passed, and it's, we we show the full line items of everything, that we can get more input on, let's get rid of this, this isn't necessary, this isn't necessary. And I'm, I'm happy people are recognizing that more than they have before, so. That's it, if there's anything else, I'll probably say, the new business, old business, I think the public's going to respond again, so, please do, thank you.
Yes, Madam President, um, I just want to first thank David and David Sedidino for working very tirelessly along with Dr. Hoco and the entire administrative team, working through this process. It's not an easy process, you know, we go through this, and the board has a lot of different varying opinions, we come from different walks of life, we do a lot of different things, and we are at each other's throat. You know, don't think that, you know, it's all, uh, you know, partying games behind closed doors, it's not. And I can tell you, you know, we we do debate a lot, and we do stick up, um, for the community. We understand everything that was said here tonight, and if you're behind the closed doors, you know that we're there arguing, we're trying to vet out the process the best we can. And it's not easy, it's not easy, and I want to thank the entire board, we worked in conjunction, we respected one another, we understood each other's opinions, and you know what, we come from different walks of life, you know, we've become, uh, very close. You know, I I see the synergy that has developed among this nine, you know, I was a a huge proponent, uh, last year. I was complaining about no synergy, you know, no collaboration, and quite frankly, I was wrong. I think that the board has worked very well together, and I think that we're all looking to make things better. And it's, it's hard, it's very hard, I've been here for eleven years plus, and I can tell you, it's not easy. Um, with that said, um, I just want to just remind everyone that this is a game of politics. This is politics at its very best. Uh, Trenton plays politics better than anyone else, and quite frankly, us, the Board of Education of the Township of Olbridge, is in the middle. Because you have a democratic establishment, and they felt that the redistribution, the redistribution of state aid was in their best interest. And most of the state aid has been redistributed to the urban centers. Um, the funding formula that's been upheld by the state Superior Supreme Court has said that, no, it's right, it's fine, it's good, there's no way around it. And we understand that, we have vetted that and discussed that, but you have to understand that this is politics at its very best. So, you know, as long as you have certain people in Trenton, it's not going to change. Because all that money's being taken from the suburban school districts and reallocated to the urban centers. And that's because of the school funding formula, which was sitting on the books for a very long time. And Governor Christie, I don't really agree with everything he did, but he did give Olbridge Township and other suburban school districts waivers. And we were able to keep our forty-six million dollars. But when Governor Murphy came into office, that all changed, the waivers were taken away, and we became an S two, and we had sequestration, and we suffered, and we lost twenty-three million dollars. And that twenty-three million dollars went to the Abbott districts, the Perth Amboys, the Precipines, New Brunswick, Newark, all the inner-city schools, and they got the money, so it's politics. But the Board of Education back in two thousand twelve and two thousand eighteen, which I was part of, is to blame as well. And, you know, everyone was always fighting and fighting, saying, no, we can't raise taxes, we have to stay at a zero, we have to, we have to, we have to, we have to. And that was always the argument, have to stay at zero. And Mr. Solakowski over there is is smiling because he was part of the board as well, he understood. And he knows where I'm coming from, because it was always the argument, we can't, we can't raise taxes more than, you know, two percent or three percent. So we would sit there and we'd go through the line item and say, okay, we can, we can cut a half a percent here. So instead of raising it two and a half percent, we're going to cut it, raise it only one percent. And not raising it that one percent saved us maybe a million dollars that year, but now it's all commutative. And now we're sitting here and like, you know, we're in a hole for thirty million dollars that the state is saying that we're under adequacy for. That's a lot of money, and I think the board has shot itself in the foot, and that was part of that. And I wish I would have known more than I do now, and I could have stood up and said, you know what, in ten, fifteen years, we're going to have a problem, because who knows what Trenton brings? And now, obviously, the school funding formula shows that we're under adequacy by thirty million dollars. And if we didn't, you know, cut a million dollars here for ten years, you know, we would be in a better position. So politics on that side also played a role, because, you know, being conservative, like I am as well, we want to, you know, pay less in taxes. I get it. So politics does play a huge role in this whole process, and it's not the board's fault, uh, at least this board's fault. You know, it's, it's, it's very difficult that we need to all understand that we are working, you know, in a way that is going to make this better for us going forward. With what's going on, and I I stressed to the board, and I made it very clear to my colleagues, and they were very understanding, and a lot of them agreed with me, that if we're going to raise taxes, we're going to have to promise to make cuts. And I got the nine, the eight other board members, my fellow colleagues, to agree that we're going to perform cuts going forward. And we're going to sit together and figure out tho, what those cuts are, because I wasn't going to vote for X amount of dollars. I was, I was up to one amount, and I stood fast on that, until I got commitment. until I got commitment from the board that we were going to reassess, you know, our redistricting, reassess, reassess our schools. Because that's a lot of money right there, because operating each school costs a lot of money. So can we repurpose schools? Can we change the, the, the matrix of our community schooling ideal? Can we do, instead of with eleven elementary schools, can we operate with nine? Could we repurpose a school for something? Because every school that, you know, we are able to deal with, we may be able to save a million and a half dollars per school. So there's a lot of things we can do. And the board has agreed to redistrict, the board has agreed to look at, you know, repurposing. We're looking to work together to figure out how we can have cost savings. And, and, and you know what, we need to preserve our schools because our property values are connected to our educational system here in Olbridge and we know it. And now if we go back to the Stone Ages and cut kindergarten, which, you know, we fought for in two thousand thirteen and we got full-day kindergarten established. And we didn't have full-day kindergarten. So that has made our home values skyrocket, I think. And Mr. Solikowski was on the board, he was in favor for it, uh, as well. Um, and we worked together and that is where the home values started to really escalate. Because now people came to Olbridge and they had full-day kindergarten. So we can't go back to the, to the, to the Stone Age of where, you know, we're, we're, we're cutting programs because ultimately it's gonna affect our, our real estate values. Um, you know, at this point, we're looking at probably a seven hundred and forty dollar a year increase. And if we don't get that increase, you may lose fifty to a hundred thousand dollars on your, your, your investment. So we have to be prudent here, we have to be smart. You know, it's, 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 it's very difficult. And again, I just want to commend all my board members for making the hard decisions and people are gonna vote yes and people are gonna vote no. But you know what, we are aligned. We are aligned together to make sure that our school district is full functioning, it gives the best education to our children, because you know what, our children are the future. They're the ones that are gonna be driving the car, moving forward. And we need to give them what we've promised as a community, the finest education. And I think that we can do that with this budget and we just need everyone to work with us and understand where we're coming from. You know, we're not gonna have a unanimous decision tonight, I can promise you. I know it's not gonna be a nine-zero, it may be a five to four or six to three. But no matter which way you vote, we're here for the betterment of our children. And I know that it's important to realize that. And this budget, you know, I'm going to vote yes for it. I am going to vote yes for it because it establishes a lot of those things that we lost over the years. We're gonna be addressing a lot of our problems and we're gonna continue with that set, with that. So with that said, I, I, I will support the budget. And again, I want to thank everyone at this table for working and making the difficult decisions because it is a difficult decision and everyone put a lot of sweat and time into it. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This is not an easy decision, especially five months now into the board. I was so much thinking, you know, should I abstain from voting? But then I realized I should not do that and use my rights and think more effectively and look at all the data and all the interactions and the collaboration we have done in the last few weeks here and make a wise decision. And this decision definitely means it's about responsibility, reality, and our shared commitment to education. I kind of, you know, going to kind of summarize pretty much what we spoke. I do have prepared notes, but I'll run through quickly because we heard very similar comments, which I'm going to say already. So we got here, we got here with the seventeen point nine five million dollar structural deficit this year. It is the direct result of our S-two classification by the state. And the state says we are overfunded, but the reality is we are under supported. Already we made a lot of remarks here and one point five billion dollars from, you know, Newark, other things. But to Marjorie's point, when we collectively looked at, what have we done all these years? Right? We do see there has been elimination of administrative and support positions. We do see reducing funding for some co-curricular programs. There has been some delays in essential upgrades in facilities and technology. And our one-time reserve funds are depleted. So these are the reasons, you know, we are here in this situation apart from all the state cuts that we have had. So what has changed this year? The deficit between twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six. Let's take a look at it. The expenditures have risen sharply. The general fund expenses have increased by over than eleven point seven million dollars. And as Mr. Widel presented, this is due to the rising health benefits and employee compensation, increased special education or auto-district tuition cost, transportation and energy price increases, among others. And on top of it, our revenue has declined significantly. And our revenues dropped by over six point two million dollars. The district lost five point three million in fund balance and reserve usage. The funds are not available anymore. And state reduced further by three percent cut to categorical eight. And there are other temporary or one-time revenues which we add a privilege for in the previous years, which we don't have access to. So together, this creates the deficit of seventeen point nine five million precisely. And now let's talk about why the tax levy increase is necessary. So the twenty-two million dollar increase in the total, uh, local tax levy supported by the one million dollar state incentive aid is the tax levy incentive aid program through which, you know, we are planning to get the deficit solved but to our taxpayers. I understand this is a significant risk, but the alternative is unacceptable. Without this budget, the only option on the table that I see, we have is elimination of full-day kindergarten, closure of two schools, removal of school security personnel, no elementary-related arts or co-curricular programs, shortened school day. We cannot run with this. We have commitments to education and to our students at the foremost. And we are not alone in this crisis. We have several districts, as mentioned earlier, about Tom's River, Free Old, Brick, where, you know, sometimes when they voted no, state has intervened, as some of us spoke here, and state makes a decision on behalf of us. And board doesn't have a control or the community doesn't have a control. And yes, you can go and sue them and yes, we agree to those feedback. We should do that to be part of the gang. But even then, you know, the results are not so interesting or there are no results at all. And the state makes a decision and which is a long-sued process. So that's how I come to a conclusion about this year's budget, that we need to make a decision right now. But at the same time, we need to have, as a board, I like the points which Mr. Dunn made, that we are very collaborative and like how Dunn said, that I'm committing to this only because we need to see improvements forward. And the same way I look at that, we need to start looking and developing a comprehensive, long-range financial plan. Yes, there is a twenty-three to twenty-eight, uh, long-range plan, which we reviewed like, uh, last, last Thursday. But I do not see any steps made towards addressing these deficits, right? So I think it's about time we all need to come together. And we have already reviewed some RFPs, uh, which probably Mr. Widel will talk through. And those are the initial steps we need to focus on. And before coming next year, we need to have a good plan in play. What happens this year will happen for sure next year, until some magic happens. So we don't have to wait for the magic of the state's aid's here. But we need to, as a community, we need, as a, a school district, administration on the board, need to solve this problem. It's our problem to solve before pointing fingers at each other or anybody else. Because we know, we do need, we do know what are our ins and what are our outs, revenues and expenses. So we do know this is the budget that we need to work with. So I strongly believe, program by program, we need to start taking a look at it. And I, for myself, didn't have enough time. I trust the administration, I trust the, my colleagues here. But beyond that, I think it is time to really fold our sleeves, get dirty and get into the weeds of it. We do have time from now until hopefully, you know, next eight months or ten months. So we do need to put that effort in. Historically, like Mr. Dunn said, we have been saying yes to everything. But no, we need to challenge each other. We have challenged enough, not to say that we did not work through. We did put in our time, whatever we had on hand, effectively. But it is time to go more deeper, right? At the same time, you know, I do not want to make drastic cuts because the options put on the table is just those drastic cuts. So my conclusion is, colleagues and community members, this vote is about more than numbers. It is about the values we hold as district. Values rooted in opportunity, safety and academic integrity. I'm voting yes because the cost of inaction is greater than the investment we ask of our community. I'm voting yes to preserve the schools of our students depend on. And I'm voting yes to begin the essential work of building a sustainable, efficient and forward-looking educational system. Let us protect what we have built and plan responsibly for what comes next. Thank you.
Matt, do you have anything? Okay. What I wanted to say was, people, one of the things that we talked a lot about was, you know, us having control as a district. Um, and I, for me, that's what my vote is about, is maintaining control. I'm not ready to vote no to stick it to the state because the state will double stick it back to us. I'm not ready to give the state control over what you, what we as taxpayers pay. We could have gone up thirty million and, you know, we didn't. We could have done just the eighteen to just make do. We didn't, we wanted to try and set ourselves up for the future. You know, we have no reserves. We have another gas leak like what happened at Zamburgh. Excuse my language, we're screwed. And I'm not ready to do that to this district. You know, as far as the long-term strategic plannings, I was asking for the past two years. I think we've had more meetings this year than the past two years combined. We have a plan going forward. I'd like to use some of the, the funding, you know, the, the plan is to use some of the funding to work more towards that. But I can't vote no and give the state control over your taxes, so. That's my two cents. Anyone else? So are we separating number eight for voting as well?
Yes.
Okay. Because originally it was just discussion, so we're gonna change that. So can we have a vote on items one, three, four, five, six, seven, nine and ten?
So one, three through seven?
Yeah, if you want to do it the easy way.
Yep. Okay. So roll call on items one, three through seven, nine and ten. Jodri?
Yes.
Mazon?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solikowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Dan Tuno?
Yes.
Resolutions pass for finance, resolutions one, three through seven, nine and ten.
Roll call on item number eight, please.
Okay. Item eight, roll call. Jodri?
Yes.
Mazon?
No.
Slade?
Yes.
Solikowski?
No.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Francisco?
No.
Giordano?
Yes.
Dan Tuno?
Yes.
Resolution eight does pass for finance.
But David?
Yes.
Turn your mic on.
So just for clarification, eight was a proposed budget based on our application. If we do have any, if we get a response from the state and they do not agree to all the items, we will have to have an emergency meeting tomorrow, which there is a policy curriculum meeting scheduled for tomorrow, um, to technically revise the application based on their final approval of the letter if it's an amount other than the amount we applied for. Is that correct?
So for example, we applied for the twenty-two, if the state...
Twenty-three total.
Twenty-three total, twenty-two on the taxpayers. If the state says no, we think three million of your expenditures are not valid, then they're reducing the total to like, say, twenty. So that's what we would be voting on tomorrow, is adopting the new total that the state is allowing us for the application. Correct?
Yes.
Madam President, are we going to suspend our policy regarding use of Zoom for this matter? Because there may be some board members who may not be available. So I'd like to make a motion to suspend that policy so that we have that ability in the event that this emergency session has to occur.
Yes, so just to clarify that, if, uh, if we have to act and we're given twenty hours to do so, like right now, or an hour to do so tomorrow evening, uh, the board's gonna need to come together. So you have a policy, a bylaw that says you can't meet via Zoom because the state of emergency is over. So you can suspend your bylaw, per your bylaws and, uh, at this point, you know, if you ever want to change your bylaws permanently, you can do that through your policy committee. But if you want to suspend it for purposes of this budget crisis, you can do so with a single vote, uh, motion second and majority. So Mr. Dunn, you want to make that motion?
Yeah, so I'll make that motion to suspend our policy regarding the use of Zoom, uh, for this one time only, for this emergency situation, if it does arise by the state.
And Mazon?
Go ahead.
Can I, can I get a clarification on that? So is it a, because there's two parts of it. One, is it for board members to attend via Zoom or is it for everybody to attend via Zoom?
I think in this circumstance, because of various extenuating circumstances, it would include administrative staff and, and, and. And it would include certainly public access. Every meeting has to include public access. So if there is an emergency meeting, it would be posted on the website. It would be communicated in every way possible. If we have seven minutes, you'll know one minute in. Um, if we have more time, you'll have more time. But we really are going minute by minute here. So yes, absolutely, the public will have access to that meeting because it would be a board action and you're entitled to be there electronically.
So is that like public speaking? I've never done this part of it, so like, is it just the public watching us or the public are given a chance to speak?
Yes, public would be given a chance to make public comments.
There would essentially be one resolution on, which would be the revision. And then as the board gets for every public meeting, a option or availability for public comment.
Anything on, oh, wait, we're...
Well, we had a motion by Dunn. We had a seconded by Jodri and now we need to have a roll call.
Roll call, please.
Jodri?
Yes.
Mazon?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solikowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Dan Tuno?
Yes.
So a motion to suspend the bylaw in regards to, um, electronic meetings is currently suspended.
So any discussion on finance items eleven through twenty-four? Okay. There's nothing on athletics. Uh, non-certificated personnel office, items one and two, any conversations? Non-certificated personnel operationals, item one through five, any discussion? Okay, non-certificated personnel other, items one through five, any discussion? All right, certificated personnel, items one and two, can I have a motion, please?
Mazon, a motion.
Can I have a second?
Jodri will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Oh, Dunn?
Yes.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Jodri?
Yes.
Mazon?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solikowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
Dan Tuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two for certificated personnel passes.
Any discussions on items three through thirty-one? Okay, seeing none. Non-certificated personnel transportations, item one through eight. Okay, transportation, any discussion on item one and two? Okay. Supplies, I'm sorry. Okay, supplies, equipment and services, items one through seven, any discussion?
I just want to, uh, point number six and point number seven is just to reaffirm what we're doing with these two expenses. So based upon the board collaborating and determining that redistricting in the district will be necessary, we need to do a comprehensive demography report. And also, um, that report's gonna tell us what a classroom usage is. It's gonna tell us, you know, where we have space availability. Um, so that's gonna help us determine, you know, the course of the future. Um, you know, the board is, is, is very attuned and very aligned in this matter and we're going to work together to figure out, um, the direction moving forward. Uh, and this is a very critical aspect to have these resources and this information at our hands. So it's gonna be a demographer's report, which is gonna show space utilization, which is the first point six, I believe. And then, I'm sorry, that's point, um, number seven. And point number six is gonna be for, uh, a building assessment, uh, program where they're gonna go in and they're going to evaluate our structures. They're gonna evaluate our, our mechanicals, uh, the sustainability of our buildings, our longevity of the buildings, things of that nature. So these, these two points are required so that we can start really digging into saving money and, and repurposing some schools possibly. But this was the first step, so, um, thank you for the board for recognizing this and we can move forward in, in a unified way. Thank you. way. Thank you.
I thought we were going to vote on this today, right? So that we can keep going on the RFP evaluation?
No.
We have gone...
Yeah, we're going over tonight, discussing it, if there's any questions, and then voting on it next week.
Well, we can make a motion to move it...
That's what I asked for earlier, but then I think everybody said we took a straw poll to vote it tonight. A straw poll was to vote it tonight. You can do that. Yes, you can. Because we seem to have consensus.
Yeah, so then let's make a motion to have a vote on items six and seven this evening.
Mr. Venkatesan, do you want, do you want to move items six and seven now? Yeah.
Giordano, second.
Six and seven, yeah.
So I have a motion by Venkatesan, a second by Giordano.
I just want to give a little more detail because I do know part of the committee, I put in some research on this topic. So as probably some of you were there on the meeting last Thursday, I think that was last Thursday. So we did, like Mr. Dunn said, we did get into the bottom of what do we need in terms of evaluating or assessing our infrastructure plus the demographics, et cetera. So we had about eight vendors, right? RFP, we got from eight vendors and some of them did not even price. They wanted to price more on like hourly. But then looking at the remaining RFPs to just summarize, we found two of them very effective. One of them was SSP Architects and the other one was them, the Parrot-Somgen Architects. And definitely the cost part of it was attractive, especially in our financial situation. At the same time, Parrot-Somgen Architects add a good amount of expertise and other similar projects done. So that was the board's feeling as well on Thursday, but I did do some due diligence, you know, after Mr. Whitehead shared some of the RFP documents to us. So we conclude that, you know, we go with Parrot-Somgen Architects.
I was surprised during that part, the difference in amounts, right? Like it was anywhere from 59,000 for the building survey to like, what, $295,000 or something like that? It was nice, a nice surprise to me and I think some of the other members of the, the committee meeting, that the company that came in with one of the lower price tags was a solid reputable company that was recommended by a few people in the room that had used them from their other career on, on things like that. So that was a nice surprise. So, cool. Excited. Any other discussion on that part? All right, roll call, please. This is item six and seven.
Okay. For items six and seven on supplies, equipment and services, I will just take roll call, filing the certified personnel roll call. So Dunn is first.
Yes.
Francisco.
Yes.
Giordano.
Yes.
Jodri.
Yes.
Mazzone.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Solakowski.
Yes.
Venkatesan.
Yes.
And Dan Toono.
Yes.
So items, resolution six and seven for supplies, equipment and services have been moved for action and passed.
And Mr. Whitehead, if you can share the next steps, right? Like we discussed, how long this is going to take, the duration of this kind of assessment, that way everybody knows the next steps that follow.
Sure, the next steps will be, as they're two different projects, we'll start by getting purchase orders out and then have communication with the architects, bring them potentially in to, you know, meet with the board as well for a, just a sit-down brief. But then we'll start, they kind of hit the ground running. So the first item, which was, and then number six was the capital improvement plan, what those architects will do is they'll get their team out and they'll physically go to all locations and check all, all basically mechanical systems, operating systems within our schools. Similarly, for item number seven, which was the enrollment capacity study, the DOE provides specific reports for what capacities can be in certain classrooms based on sizes. So again, the architectural team will come in, they'll meet with each individual principal, administration, talk about our programs, talk about the spaces directly within those schools and do comprehensive, you know, reporting and analysis on, based on the Department of Education figures that you can have and through their data and their questionnaires. And basically it's about a four-month process at the least, I'm going to say. Sweet spot's probably around six months and then there'll be final reports that will be presented to the board, to the district to then use for our long-term planning as we discussed.
So which means technically from now until September, this assessment is going to happen. When we come back to school in September, hopefully we should have the report. And then we got from September till January to really make some good decisions around how we are going to function in the future, especially again, you know, with this kind of budget situation.
Right.
So I just want everybody to know, that's the reason I wanted us to move this forward and that's the discussion we had the other day. So we're all in alignment that we do need, need to get this going. And to all of your knowledge, this does take some time. There's no magic going to happen in the next few months, but we will collaborate, we will follow up because we need to invest along with the external architects as well and assess this more early on. I would say I would not wait until September. If you can get plugged in interim reviews or whatsoever, early the information is early the better for us to make the strategic plan work. But the real plan we all can sit down and look at is only from September till January. So that's what the reality is, actually.
Anyone else? Miscellaneous, items one through 11, any discussion? Board secretary and board business, anything? Okay. Hearing other residents on any district-wide item. And again, if you're going to speak, please line up.
It's too different when I actually do the notes.
Alicia Tenaro again. I just wanted to follow up on what I said earlier and clarify a few things. I didn't, is this too loud? Okay. I didn't want to speak publicly because I didn't want it to look like I'm bashing our schools. That's not what I'm trying to do. But I've seen how up in arms people have been about late buses after they didn't realize it was happening and it made me wonder if people were aware of some of the other issues like class sizes that I'm so passionate about. My son has been in a class of 25 or more since kindergarten. I'd have to go back and check the numbers, but I do think he was in more than 25 in some of those grades. So that's kindergarten, first, second, third, and now fourth, which I think he has 27 kids, all of elementary after COVID, after he was remote learning through kindergarten, with all those kids in the class. My frustration has been building for years, so maybe you can understand where I'm coming from with that perspective, that I've been keeping my mouth shut as an employee here. I don't want it to come off like I'm bad-mouthing, but I'm a parent first and I decided that I need to speak up for my kids because now that I see what's happening in the middle school that they're going to go to, I feel like I can't keep silent any longer if this is now going to carry over to that. Because I keep thinking it's going to get better, it's going to get better. And last year, it actually got worse. So I understand what's legal, but what's acceptable for the parents of Old Bridge is what I'm trying to figure out. And I think that's what you all need to know when you're making your decisions. What's legal up to 30? Well, we also need to look at what are the classroom sizes, how many kids can actually fit in those rooms, which I think was just mentioned. So yes, can you have 30 in a room? You sure can. But what's the quality of their education with that many kids in the room? That's something that is a priority to me. I don't know if that's a priority to others. Maybe sports is more important. If that is, then we have to go with the majority. I understand that. But I just don't think that all the parents watching, when they typically, a lot of them maybe only watch at the budget time, maybe they're not aware of these things going on. So I'm not trying to bash and I'm sorry they came off that way, but I'm just very passionate about the learning of our children and I, not just for my own kids, but for my students. So going to now, oh, I'm sorry, I'm skipping because now my daughter started kindergarten, again, 25 students. That was last year. And I was so looking forward to first grade because there was going to be three classes in first grade instead of the two that there were in kindergarten. And then last year's budget came and guess what? Then first grade got cut down to two. So the hope that I had when she's learning to read in first grade, that maybe she wasn't going to get, I don't want to use bad words, like my son got screwed over is what I want to say. Like all those years, I was hopeful for her that, okay, she won't have the same struggles that he had, that I had to fight for three years to try to get him back on grade level because he was under grade level for three years. And I didn't want that for my daughter. But then last year's budget, now she's in a class, and I think it's 26. I don't think it's 25. I'd have, I mean, she's not really, she's not counting the kids in her class, so I can't really trust what she's saying at six years old. But that's what she's in, when she's trying to learn to read. And I'm watching this with my kids and as an educator, I'm working my butt off with them, doing stuff, making them do work over the summer and they hate me because I'm making them do work even though they don't have summer work. They're on IXL, they're doing packets that I'm printing out because I don't want them to fall behind because I see my kids coming in in sixth grade and they have fallen behind. And I feel like we're ignoring that. I feel like we're not shedding light on that. We're not putting it out there and I want parents to be aware of that. And I'm not trying to bash, but it's just the reality and that we can't ignore it and say, you know, all this stuff is a priority because, you know, that's what we heard about. But well, if you hear about this and you still don't think it's a priority, then that's fine. The board needs to know that and then you vote accordingly. But I just feel like that needs to be put out there to the public. And as much as I don't want to speak, I feel like no one else is and I have to because I need to do that for my fellow parents and for my fellow colleagues and for my students and for my children. Now I'm running out of time. But we mentioned the enrollment, like that it's, it's going down, but my class sizes last year were 14 to 20 and this year they're 22 to 28. So my class sizes are increasing because of the cut blocks from last year. And if you do the math with the desks, you, it's not more desk per student, it's more desk per classroom. And now if more, every classroom needs more desks, if you do the math, I don't know how many classrooms there are, but I needed six more classrooms added to my desk this year. If every classroom had even two, that's got to be more than 50 desks. Where are those 50 desks? We've used every backup that we have. So when one breaks like it did yesterday, I call and there's no new one. I have to tape it up because there's sharp pieces of metal hanging out. And again, I don't want to say that because I don't want it to make it look like we're not doing all we can. I know everybody works so hard, but I think there are areas that we can do better if we knew about them. So I'm just trying to shed light on that so that we can all work together to make that better. And I support you voting on that budget. That is not what I was trying to say. I'm happy that you did that. I just want to make sure we're prioritizing what's really important when we decide where that extra money goes. Thank you.
I'm just going to piggyback on that. When I asked earlier if the board goes line through line, seeing where...
Can you restate your name again?
I'm sorry, Michelle Cordero. I apologize. When I asked if the board goes line through line to see where certain funding is going, one of the reasons that I came here is it was explained to me that in, our kids get language taught to them in elementary school. My kids had Spanish, then Chinese, which the teacher almost never showed up. And now Spanish, now Chinese, they know three words in each language. We're, we're spending all this money on language in elementary school. They're not learning anything from it. Why is that funded in that way? Is that necessary? Then we go to middle school. They're taking a different language every single year until eighth grade and then they get to choose. What are they learning through that? Why are they not getting one language? Other than English, the two biggest languages in this country are Spanish and Chinese. Those should be the options. That's my opinion, obviously. I'm not an educator and I would love to hear from them if they agree with me. But why do we have seven options? You're learning it for six months, you're getting nothing from it, and then in eighth grade you pick another language? This is where I feel like waste of money is happening. So looking at things like that, looking, maybe talking to the staff in the schools and hearing firsthand from them where they feel like money is being wasted because they know better than any of us. And just then maybe we end up with more money for things like sports that are important to people or more academic programs that are important.
Still short. Samantha Caridi. I know that you guys have spoken a lot about like behind the scenes, you're talking about redistricting and all of that. And I was just, first of all, wondering when you guys are going to kind of give us just a general idea of what that means. I know a lot of people probably aren't in support of redistricting. However, Mr. Sidedino, you spoke about the sweet spot for class sizes. When my son was in Miller and had a class of 25, Carpenter had a class of 10. So neither of those schools were in that sweet spot and my kids did not get the same education that kids in Carpenter got. And that's a problem that that's completely unfair. And yes, redistricting, closing schools, you know, it's going to make a lot of people angry, but if it's going to promote equality across the district, I'm definitely in support of that because it's, it's absurd to have one kindergarten class crammed to the gills and another kindergarten class with hardly any students. So that's what I have to say.
Not as sure. Brooke Richards Patterson. So I took a bunch of notes. Again, I just want to thank everybody for taking all the time away from your families to work on this, especially Mr. Whitehead. I mean, just has an answer for literally every single question, like quickly too. So clearly he's done his homework. So I really kind of stand by the things that I said earlier and I did listen to what Dr. Tuohy was saying as far as basically latchkey kids, right? That's what it sounds like. I mean, I was an 80s kid, so I was a latchkey kid. Very neglected, alcoholic father, no mother. So I can relate to that child and I just wish that maybe we could like, you know, create a committee to find some, a different maybe avenue to help kids like that, that maybe like the peer. I remember that when my, my daughter was young, like the peer group or something that might benefit them and us financially, you know, different avenue was my point. And then if we're going to do this thing tomorrow, this Zoom thing, is that going to push back the curriculum topic of this? That meeting was tomorrow, right? No? Okay. The other thing, a couple of things I want to just ask, I'm sorry if I'm too loud. Is the Old Bridge app costing money? Because I don't get any push notifications. I like check it pretty often. I don't get push notifications. There aren't really like, like timely announcements and if it's costing money, maybe just toss it? To be honest, I think the, the stuff that I pay attention to the most as far as announcements is when Mr. Sidedino calls and leaves a message and texts us. That's like, that's the one I pay attention to more than all the emails and the PTA and Twitter and stuff. That was just a thought, maybe we could save money there. The Planetarium, I know, I don't know, I know this is really late tonight, but I would honestly love to hear like what the idea is as far as how much revenue that could potentially be, that can help us. And the devices, I mean, are these going to be necessary forever? Are they saving us money than using textbooks? Are the children benefiting from it? You know, so, and then also I know Ms. Dantonio mentioned like, you know, going above the $17 million, but why not? Why? You know, because if we're going to have a gas leak, would the capital fund account not cover that? We have $10 million in there. No? Okay, I guess you'll tell me after. You know, maybe you could touch on that? And so those are just some more thoughts. Oh, and I also wanted to acknowledge Dr. Tuohy from the last committee meeting because I had emailed and mentioned that I would really love to see the committee meetings report, like the reports. And he was actively taking notes the whole time. I would love to see them on the district website. I try to make all the committee meetings because I think they're all so meaningful. And so I also know that Ms. Marjorie takes really good notes if you're not there. But so, because I like to know what's going on. Um, but, so, because I like to know what's going on, I'm sure a lot of parents do, too, and, um, so, those were just, um, I think I got all my notes. Yeah. So that was it. I just, again, thank you all for taking all the time, and I do ask a lot of questions, and I know you guys do, too, but I just don't know if they're the same questions, so I just feel better. I, I like clarity, I ask questions, so, thank you again.
Everyone, Jeff Finkles in the gang. Just wanted to, uh, thank, uh, Mr. Sidedino for mentioning about, um, the lawsuit, that Jackson or Towns River had no success, but I think that a coalition is better than just one or two towns. Um, I think the state's kind of divided by half, for the most part. I think there's a lot of towns can get involved in this, in this coalition, to, uh, to basically stand out for, for what's right, or what's unfair. Um, and also I'd like to thank the attorney, thank you for, uh, you know, stating that, you know, you're only gonna do whatever you're told to do, right? So, so that goes back to the board. So, Mr. Sidedino is on his way out in a couple months, the attorney's only doing what he's asked to do. So what's the board gonna do about this? Because, you were elected by us, and we want action to be taken. I mean, I think we, we need to have an understanding of, if you can't, if you can't find out from a meeting in Trenton, with, with, you know, with all these coalition going down there from the town, or a couple towns, you know, put it under, put it in the courts. Um, you mentioned about the, uh, New Jersey Supreme Court, that it stops there, uh, but unfortunately, the way the court system works, it doesn't stop there. I mean, there are other courts, there are appellate courts, there are, there are other, um, the higher courts, as far as the, uh, the Court of Appeals, and then there's also the Supreme Court, the US Supreme Court. So, it doesn't stop at the New Jersey State Supreme Court. That's only the highest point in this state. So, okay, so, the taxes have been raised again this year. Last year we had a same conversation about taxes being raised again. Things have, you know, probably might get cut, who knows? We'll, we'll see. But, you know, we're destined to have this conversation again next year, next year, and next year. Because, it, like I said earlier, it's so easy just to raise the taxes. You're not taking any action about, okay, why is Newark getting $1.3 billion of state aid? Why? You mentioned about $30,000 per child. Um, how is that, how is that allowed? How, who is gonna do something about that? It doesn't take one or two towns, it could start with one or two towns, but it shouldn't end with one or two towns. You gotta do something. You can't just sit there and say, "We tried, we went to, we took a busload of, of us to Trenton, we had signs, you know, 1993 signs, whatever it was." I mean, this is all a joke, I mean, you guys are laughing at us, because we think laughing at us, because you're not doing anything that's benefiting us. You, you cut buses for after-school activities unless it's a school sport. If a child stays after for extra help, clubs, what, and et cetera, there's no busing. There's no busing. So, we're getting less, we're paying more, and you're just gonna raise taxes again, because, sorry, it's 2026, and the state cut our budget again, our funding again, sorry, it's 2027, the state cut our funding again. I mean, I'm gonna be here for the next 10 years, in these meetings, asking you, why are you not doing anything about it? You're just sitting there and just taking it, and say, "We're gonna raise taxes again, we don't want teachers to get laid off, we don't want the programs to get cut." Listen, I'm a product of this town, I do not want the, the programs to be cut. I, I think there are, there are great programs in this town. But you have to understand, and, and you follow up, why the money is not coming into the town? And why is it going to towns like Perth Amboy, like Newark, like Carteret? I mean, this, the, the data is not there. The da- I mean, the data is there. So, you have to ask the questions, and if you can't do it in a, in a, in an email to somebody in Trenton, then do it in a courtroom. Do it in a courtroom! Do something, take action. You're elected to take action, not just sit there and raise taxes. That's not taking action. That is the easy solution. Good night.
No, I think it's still on. And technically, I'm the original short girl. Um, sorry, are you, if you haven't been here in the past? Yes. Thank you, everybody, for your comments, your input.
I just want to say, and this is only because you're the third person to mention your height, we do have a stepstool there, for those who are vertically challenged. Just want to let you know.
Maybe next time I'll wear heels. Well, I wanted to say thank you, everybody, for your vote, for your input, whether you voted for it or not, at least you gave your insight as to what you were thinking when it comes to our township. Um, something, because usually, I'm always in the back, we don't always have a full house, and I'm seeing a lot more people show up. When we have the committee meetings, like, I know we try, and they try to get it out to the other parents, so things that are discussed, like why kindergartens to second grade have, um, laptops, we discussed it at a technology meeting before. As far as the curriculum for classes, what they do, any issues, it comes out the curriculum meeting, so there's like a whole list. So when it comes to strategic planning, which Kieran had mentioned before, it's open, usually now, Jen, thank you condensed it to once a month, because last year, I swear, I was out of the house Monday through Thursday, every night, going to a committee meeting, going to BOE, but it's something where they ask for the parent input. So I don't know if they're just gonna start doing the meeting minutes, releasing it on the website, so parents can start getting involved, or maybe they can contact, if you look on the website, it tells you who's in charge of each committee. And in regards to this whole thing with the formula, I've mentioned it before, I don't know if he's aware, because also been here a long term, we have not been assessed since 1984. I'm kind of scared of what's gonna happen next year, because they did push it. It's gonna be a major hit. One-third of the town will go up a lot, one-third might stay the same, one-third might go down. But that part of the formula of not paying a fair share does tie into our school taxes. So I'm glad for this year, yes, it is a mandate fix, but we're doing, needs to be done for the town. So I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, at this point, I'm gonna close the public portion. Mr. Sidedino?
All right, just, um, on a few of the items that came up, why do we have languages in the elementary school? It's actually required, it's actually required by New Jersey content curriculum, that you have expose your children to cultures and languages in the elementary school. How you deliver, it can be multiple things. Now, it could be delivered by the regular classroom teacher in there, most of them won't have an expect, expertise in Mandarin, or, um, Italian, or Spanish, but we could provide them with a program. We have to provide something, so it's gonna have some cost, whether we provide, uh, software, a video series, and that would begin, put more pressure on that classroom teacher who's in there, who must stay in there, and work with the students on that content there. And by bringing in someone who exposes them to a, a language in which you're trained in, maybe Mandarin, or, or, or Spanish, uh, the goal is, again, is not to have students speaking fluently, um, by the time they leave fifth grade in, in a language, but to expose them and make them empathetic, and world, more worldly knowledgeable, that there's cultures, and, and that's more of what takes place in the elementary curriculum, is more of exposure to cultures, and different differences from the architecture, the arts, the food, you know, different types of experiences, so they don't grow up in an experience that everyone speaks English in the entire world. Same thing with middle school, middle school, it's mandatory that you have to have exposure to a world language and cultures. What we do in the middle school format is expose them to, uh, sixth and seventh grade, to Italian, German, uh, Mandarin, Spanish, and French. We want to forgive them student choice. We don't want to say to them, "Well, we had a lottery, we have, we were able to hire one French teacher, one German teacher, one Spanish teacher, and that's gonna be your choice, because there are, um, 125 kids in that section, and you gotta divide up with those three teachers." We'd like to give our students choice, so that by eighth grade, they can decide what language that they want to go into, and, um, follow that, because then it is a requirement, a graduation requirement for high school, but they can start fulfilling some of that, uh, desire for world languages in eighth grade, as a, uh, Level 1 course, a Spanish 1, Italian 1, you can take that in eighth grade here in Olbridge. Um, elementary sections, uh, I don't know if you have any data on that, we can probably get some information for the next meeting, on the lowest, I don't, I don't know of any classrooms that had 10 general education classroom students last year, but we can get more information on it. You had, you have it? Okay, go ahead.
Um, there are classrooms that, we have sections that have 11 or 12 general education students, but there are seven to nine special education students that are mainstreamed into those classrooms, for various portions of the school day, in addition to the related arts. We have to account for all of our students, so those numbers are part of the numbers that are, are provided in determining class sections. There are also sections that in September, start out with a particular number, and then students leave, and then those numbers go down to what we would not normally have a section. We also look at every year, where those numbers and those class sections changed, change, and we have what we call bubble classes. So there are sometimes grade levels that have, you know, 25 in a class all the way up, but another section has 20 or 22, and that's dependent upon the enrollment in that grade, and in that particular school. We have several classrooms across the district that are closed, and we have overflow. And that's another reason why you might have 25 in one section, and then, um, a different number in another school. It is by, based on the population. We've seen our enrollment shift in some of our schools, where the, where the numbers have gone down, down in sections, um, and have gone up in, in other schools. Madison Park is an example of a school that has experienced an influx of 100-plus students in that building, um, and we've added sections to accommodate for that. We also take into consideration the, what happens when we overflow, and what that does to transportation and the routes, and what buses are available in certain locations, in order to provide overflow, whereas in other locations, they would not be available. So there are a lot of things that go into those class sections, but we want, monitor those numbers. There are no sections in kindergarten or first grade that have more than 25 students. And we keep those numbers, um, at 25, across the board, all year long.
Can you speak real fast to the kindergarten enrollment process? Because I, I know that plays a part sometimes, too, because there's this, um, situation where we'll get a lot of parents pre-sign up for kindergarten, but they don't, then don't fully sign their kids up. So we're looking at an enrollment number, it's, it's a kindergarten anomaly, because that's when they first enter our schools, uh, for many students. So parents will pre-enroll their kids in this, the school, and then not complete enrollment, so we have these projections that aren't always accurate, too.
So right now, when we're looking at class sections, all of the numbers are based on the actual kindergarteners that are enrolled. We have approximately 100, and I believe it's 121 students that are still in preregistration that have not completed their enrollment. So I can't count those in the class sections, they may never enroll. Some of them may, some of them may not. So we look at that while, and I can project out that, based on the historical process, that I can anticipate that at least 10 in this school will enroll, five in this school, particular schools that, that we see have later enrollments, there are certain schools that we generally see, generally see the population enroll, finish, complete the process in August. And we try to reach out, anybody who's preregistration, we constantly are reaching out and saying, "Please finish, so that we can count you." Our schools, where we only have one section in kindergarten, those schools typically get their, their registration completed, because they could run into an overflow situation. But that process, right now, we've actually done very well this year with the preregistration, and we have more students enrolled at this time. But we still have over 100 that are outstanding, and that doesn't count anybody who may come move in to the district over the summer.
All right, there was a question about the Olbridge app. I'll get more information on, but I believe that is included in the base plan, for, with Thrill Share, but go ahead.
I, I'm thinking about the, the website, and that's not part of the website now.
Yes, it is.
It is?
Yes.
Okay, then it's included in the website. Because we pay one, one fee for the website, I can tell you that we negotiated that fee when we upgraded the website last year.
We saved $10,000.
And they, they reduced our fee substantially, and right now, we're negotiating again, because they wanted to increase the fee by $10,000, um, for the website, and I said no.
Didn't they save us $10,000 last year?
They gave us $10,000 off, now they want us to pay the $10,000.
Now they want it back?
It was, it's $30,000 for the website, they, we char- they charged us $20,000 last year with the upgrade, which was a substantial discount, and, and cost savings, to stay with them, and now they've increased it to $30,000, but I've said no, so we're negotiating.
You're, and you're, oh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, can we, can we work on the app? Is that included in the whole negotiation process with them? Because the app is, I mean, face it, it's pretty useless.
We don't pay an additional fee for it, but yes, we can go back and revisit the app.
Or we can work with the people in each school to just push more stuff through it. Okay. Um, I wish, you know, I'm gonna, it was one thing, I'm a mission negotiation skills, I tell you that much, because I'm, I'd be afraid to negotiate against you.
On a path, because I will share that we're also negotiating with Frontline, which is a huge one of our, um, all of our staff information, our, our, um, evaluation system, our hiring, our absence management, and that was another one that was increasing by, I think this year it was 5%, and they just agreed to freeze that, and not increase us, and then reduce for the next two years.
Top one, nice job.
And I got additional things added, so I just-
Great job. She actually called me, the rep today, she wants to meet with me, because she's probably afraid of you. All right, um, question about capital funds. So, in a situation like a, a gas leak, and I just wanna, I just keep gonna say this, there was no gas leak, there was just too much gas pushed by the energy provider, whether they want to say it or not, because you don't just get a 75 leaks in one day, you know? That, that has to happen through an act. Anyway, so, with that situation, no, initially you cannot have, use it through capital funds, yeah, capital funds pass to be included in your capital building plan, so, but, you can move the money from capital funds to replenish in your reserves, but you have to have the money in the reserves first to make the repair. So you always have to have a lump sum of money to build the, to have these unexpected repairs, because you can't put unexpected repairs in your, you know, you can't say in your capital improvement plan, we just want to cover any unexpected repairs, you can't, it has to be specific to what you'd use it for. So you have to have that, those funds. It's like the ROD grants, we've applied for ROD grants in the past, but they want us to fund it, and then the state will reimburse it for us after we fund it, but if you don't have the money upfront, then you can't pu- uh, put some of these ROD, ROD grants in place. I just want to give this one bit of perspective, and I thank the board and the public for being very diligent and, um, inclusive, and, you know, your, your desire to not want to know what's going on in school, and have a voice, I think it's important. But I want you to have this perspective. I became a superintendent, started working in central administration, 2012, 13. December 2012, um, a psychopath walked into a, uh, elementary school in Connecticut, and eliminated lives of 26 people, 20 children, six, um, adults who were working very hard that day. On that day, in Olbridge, we had zero armed officers in our elementary schools. We had a smattering of SROs across the district, but we were unprotected, and it forever changed the, the dynamic of how schools will look. Just doing quick math in my head, we have spent accumulatively, over the course of that time, now, think about the time when we've lost from $45 million to $22 million in state aid, our costs for just that portion of it have accumulated been over $35 million, just to keep our schools safe. So these are things in which you say, "Well, where's the money going? How can you pay for it?" This dynamic of, while we've lost aid, the dynamic of things we have to pay for in schools has drastically changed. And, you know, anyone who's seen me up here fighting for things, knows that even though we have to put things on, because the state doesn't, the state doesn't mandate that you have to have security in your schools, the state doesn't mandate you have to have armed officers, but I wouldn't let our schools operate in any other way in 2025, and it's sad that I have to say that. But, that's part of, that's part of it, like, when you say, "Well, where's the money going?" As, as you're losing millions, you're spending millions, because the world has changed. Same thing with computers, you know, we, we, I'd love to say we don't need them as much, and, but, the days of the mandated tests that we get from this data, from, everyone remembers the number two pencil, bring your number two pencil, have about four of them, get in a little Ziploc bag, you brought them in, you filled in the dots, yeah, those days are gone. The state has adopted, um, through Pearson, um, the NJSLA testing, which requires the students to take it with a device. And as the testing's going on this week, it requires devices for every student that are taking a test, from elementary school up to high school, and it's a burden to the taxpayers, and a burden to school to have that many devices. Obviously, it was impacted by, uh, the pandemic, but the need to keep them going forward, has been mandated by the testing format in which we use. So, and you don't want to say to a student, I mean, think about this, you don't want to say to a, a third grader, "All right, today's testing, we're gonna take out the computer you haven't used all year, and we're gonna have you take a test on it." You have to be prepared on how to use it. You have to know how to use it, because the worst time to use it, when's you're stressed, and you're about to do something you never- and you're about to do something you've never done before, you don't want them to say, hey, take out this device and start using it today. You want them to be acclimated with how to use the device to do the, to be able to perform their best. So those are some of the changes in, just in the short time while I've been a superintendent, that have changed the, our cost structure and the needs we've, we've had to spend money while at the same time losing about 45% of our state aid. So, thank you, and that'll close my comments for tonight.
Board comments? I guess we can lump old and new business to try and save time.
Got it, okay.
Should we just go down the line?
Yes.
Could be easier. Rich, any comments tonight?
No, no comments tonight. I said enough.
Please just decipher if it's gonna be old or new business, please, thank you.
That's on, I said, let's all combine it. Okay.
Do it, just let me know which one it is.
Okay, this is old business. So back to the comment, that's what the request for proposal was, to do the capacity study to determine, because we have a lot of new, more developments, more students coming in, and there's more that has yet to be built, so that study's gonna take care of the class sizes going forward. When it comes to the lawsuit for the state, I think it's not responsible for us to use lawyer fees to do that, especially if it's a non-winning battle, but I think we should go pro se as a board and discuss it, and I think we could write our own complaint to them. Most complaints by the school ethics commission that go to administrative law judges that are real judges, most of them are pro se on the plaintiff and defendant's side, so I think that's something to consider if we bring something up as a board together. Of course, I'll do it myself, I don't have a problem doing that either. And, okay, so, oh, and also, with this lawsuit, even though it fits bought by us, I think we're intelligent enough to come close to legal presentation, and if that leads to fact-finding from the state where we have to get the courts to make them show the budget, if that's kinda correct legalese, okay? And this is new business. Thank you for your comments. I'm always all for hearing cuts from the public, any suggestions, especially from the teachers, students, and parents. And also brought up in the emails were sponsorships. I don't know if we should start renaming schools, but I do not have a problem in this TikTok age of putting advertisements, especially locally, in elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools. I know at the high school, you could buy crypto. You put your card in, you could buy crypto, so the age, technology's changing.
I'm not opposed to Costco Elementary, but some of, some of their competitors would really be a dicey name, so.
But, but it's a, it's a, it's a changing world, it's, it's a very, lot of, lot of consumerism, especially with the Gen Alpha kids, so I think sponsorships are a good idea. Like for Lombardi, Lombardi, we have all those around, I think Mr. Wydell could talk about that as well, so I think it's a good idea to have that in schools. And that's it for old and new business, thank you.
Marjorie?
I just wanted to, once again, thank David for all his hard work. The things that we ask of him are just crazy. You know, even things the public asks, people who won't even identify themselves, won't, we don't know where they live, we don't know who they are, they won't give their real name, but they ask him all this extraordinary amount of work, and he, every single time politely and respectfully replies, and I don't know if I could do that if I were him, but he does it, and we really appreciate it. And I know you take time away from your, your child, your home life, your everything, because you answer any of our texts or emails anytime, but we really do appreciate it, so.
Well, you stole my comments. Steal the seconds, you're just on a roll tonight. I, I'll just reiterate that. I, I probably can't even say it better.
It sounds better coming from Marjorie.
Ditto, no, really. I mean, a lot, we all have put in endless time, but none of us can even compare to the time that you've put in, Mr. Wydell. I, I don't even want to know what times you've been here to at night, your wife probably wants to kill you on the daily, I can only imagine. Or us, yeah, it's true, you should direct it towards us. And, yeah, you have dealt with everything graciously, and every single time we ask questions, and we have nine people up here, plus everybody from the public that's asked questions, and you have answered in a very timely fashion, so I'm appreciative for, for all of that. I also want to say thank you to the community for stepping up, getting involved, hearing your voices. I know it's not easy. It's not easy getting up here to speak, it's not easy sending that email, it's not easy putting yourself out there, so I just want to say thank you to everybody who has reached out to us, and I continue to encourage that, we need it, we need to hear from the community, and I love to hear from staff members as well, so please continue that. Okay, that's it. I'm gonna, I had something else, but I'm gonna let Christina.
You want me to say it?
Karen?
Yeah, again. Oh, you're working backwards?
I'm wrong no matter which way I do it, but go ahead, Karen.
Again, thanks, everyone, for your wonderful feedback, and probably this is the first time I'm seeing a teacher come up and talk. We need more of this, more of inside-out as well, that's the only way we come to know what's happening in your classrooms or anywhere. There are many means, right? Doesn't have to be this podium, but you could shoot an email to any of us, please, we encourage that. And these were the difficult times last few weeks, Mr. Wydell, I echo the same, everyone is saying, thank you very much, you know, from bottom of my heart, I would say, you're very, very hardworking, you know? And it would not be easy for any of us by you not giving us the amount of data that we are looking for, not just for us and even for the public, you know, in your responses and everything. Look forward to collaborate with you more and more, and definitely I'm invested in the strategic plan, and as you see, we took that right away in today's to vote. So I'm going to see, like Mr. Dunn, again, I'm gonna pick you, Mr. Dunn, again and again, because you do keep echoing that we are collaborating, collaborating, so I won't echo that again and again. So I'm, fingers crossed, next six to eight months, we should have a good strategic plan on how we manage this district better and better. That's all for now, thank you.
Matt, any comments? Okay. Mr. C?
Thanks for your service, what, 10, 11 years, 12 years? I remember when you, we hired you, you were a young kid, and all of a sudden, your, your hair started to, you know, turn gray, I guess it was from the pressure here. But again, thank you for your service.
Yes, I have a comment, and I wonder, I wonder who made his hair gray? The board. I normally don't comment on public comment, but I'll just speak for myself. I kind of take it personal when someone says that we raised taxes just as a quick fix, it was an easy remedy. I take offense to that because of the man-hours that we put in. I mean, till midnight at one night, in the middle of the day at 10 o'clock in the morning, I, I don't think I was on the school bus, but I did go down to Trenton. I didn't have any signs made up from any dates, but I was on the bus? Okay, so I was on that bus. Let's write the snacks, the snacks were on the bus. Right. So, you know, we put our time in, and again, this is voluntary work, we, it's not a quick fix, so we sat in rooms, we, you know, didn't agree, but we agreed to disagree. But to say that we just used a tax increase as a quick fix, I take that offensively, especially since I'm paying the same amount of taxes as my neighbor is, if there's an increase. In reference to, we were elected and we should be sending emails and speaking to legislators, I know I've sent emails out, just being a board member doesn't give us carte blanche that our emails get front and center. So as a taxpayer, as a citizen of Olbridge, send emails as well, you know? They want to hear from you, they want to hear from us, so we don't have a special password to get our emails heard and responded to. So I know I speak for myself, I'm, think of all of us, we're very proactive, we're very hands-on, we listen to what you guys have to say, but this tax increase was not a quick fix, so.
I just want to add the, sorry, you know, but I want to add to what you said, this is not a quick fix at all, nobody want this at all, right? As taxpayers, we ourselves as well, our kids go to the school district, same school district, but we have been to Trenton twice, right? Many of the board members, or most of the board members, twice in the last few months, so there is record to it, that is just not that, you know, we're not looking at other options, yeah.
And also, just to say, and I remember, I know Brooke was there, we were the only people up in Trenton that spoke. Brooke was the only non-board member that was up there and spoke, so, I might say if it doesn't mean that much to you, but if it's that impactful, get up and speak, send an email, you know? Voicemail, listen, do I think it's gonna go anywhere? No. And they hear you, they listen, but if you want your voices heard, they have open ears and open microphones, so you have to make an effort. Thank you.
Okay, Christina?
So I have a couple of things. So one, I still don't understand the Costco School thing, so if someone can please explain this, because I am literally lost and I don't know what it means.
They would pay us.
They were saying privatizing.
Sponsorship, yeah. They would pay us a lump sum to rename one of our schools.
Right.
Costco Elementary.
Right. But I don't get, I don't get it.
No, because we're gonna, we're gonna rename Grissom Costco Elementary.
To make up the deficit of the budget.
Okay. I guess I'm lost. I guess I'll say only, I don't know what that means, but okay, great. The next one is, I do want to thank the community for speaking up, sending emails, getting up there and speaking, whether you're a parent, whether you're not a parent, a taxpayer, whether a young taxpayer with kids in the schools, an older taxpayer with no kids in the schools, a staff member, it, it is, it's not easy to get up and speak, and there's a lot of different opinions, you know, especially from the nine of us, and I think that's where, that's what the board is supposed to be. I don't think we're all supposed to agree on everything, because if we agreed on everything, then what kind of board would we, would we be? I, I do want to say, with all the emails that came through about the budget, I, I tried to answer as honest as I can about where I stood with things and just my outlook on it, ooh, sorry. And I do always encourage people, because sometimes emails do get misinterpreted, you know? You want to reach out to me, whether it's a phone call, an email, I'm, I'm all ears. I like to hear, hear from staff. I don't know what goes on inside schools, I don't know, you know, what goes on on a daily basis, and I wish I did, because then maybe it would be a little bit easier for us as board members to understand where our staff is coming from. So I always encourage staff, whether it's, you know, principals down to students, to reach out and to let us know what's going on inside the schools, because we don't know, we're not there all the time. And last but not least, SEPTA had their last meeting today, and actually, they sent us an, they sent me a text message to read out loud, because they couldn't be here today. SEPTA is proud to announce that we have raised over $15,000 and have been fully funded thanks to Lowe's partnership and our generous community donations. Lowe's Marlboro and Lowe's East Brunswick have partnered up with SEPTA on this project to bring it to fruition. We have had over 60-plus donors, including parents, staff, local businesses, community members, Shepherd PTA, Board of Ed, and town council members, truly an amazing effort on all parts. SEPTA now gets to transform four special education classrooms alongside the collaboration with Dr. Sasso, Dr. Tui, Dr. Doherty, and Ms. Adenalfi. An amazing time during budget distress for us to provide additional support from our team and our community. I want to say congratulations to, to SEPTA for fundraising this, and it really is truly remarkable what these classrooms provide for our students, and I encourage everyone to go visit, I mean, I'm sure if they reach out, they are able to go and view the classroom, correct? So now we will have a total of five, right? Or a total of four? Total of five? Six? Six, a total of six classrooms. So congratulations to SEPTA, thank you everyone who donated to get these classrooms fully funded, and I think I am finally done speaking, so, thanks. David Wydell, I will be sending you an email to get up on that Costco School thing, because I'm still confused about it, so, thanks.
You asked for it to be separated, so old business, I'd give credit where credit was due, the two nights a week was Alina's idea, so want to give her credit for the committee staying on those two nights. For new business, I think we're going to try and talk about class size in the policy meeting tomorrow, or can we please add that to the conversation tomorrow? Can we ask for just an assessment of our classroom furniture?
Tomorrow?
No. In general, you know, if we're hearing, you know, just, and maybe that can be part of the. Buildings and grounds, but also, I don't know if the RFP, if that company is doing it. As far as the redistricting, that's the long-term strategic planning meeting, so we had, we've had two so far this year, which is more than we've had in the past two years, but the next one they're looking to do the end of June, right, somewhere around graduation time, Sal? So, but that's part of the district calendar under, like, if you go on the website, each school has their own web, kind of host page, the district has a host page, all the committee meetings are on that calendar, so just follow the long-term strategic planning. It's also part of finance committee, but come to those meetings. Students come to those meetings. I don't know if she's willingly or unwillingly, but my 16-year-old has been part of the redistrict or the long-term strategic planning since she was, since we had them a few years ago. So everyone's invited to come to those. I would also like to thank the admin team, not only David, but David's family, for the sacrifice of time. I know you owe your kids some extra bedtime stories because you missed bedtime, and, you know, give your wife some time off, so going through all of that and all your hard work with the district. Although I under, I wish Mr. Philcoulstein didn't leave, although I understand the point of lawsuits, I'd rather desks and paper than, than lawsuits against Trenton, which I have very little hopes of winning, and I don't know if Mr. Parton wants a road trip to Washington for the Supreme Court, but I'd rather paper my classrooms. Jay beat me to it, I'm deeply offended by, and I had to bite my tongue from saying something while he was speaking, that we sat back. Many of us take time off of work, take money out of our families and food off our tables to go through the budget and staying till midnight and, you know, rearranging work schedules, it costs us money. You know, we've established, we don't get a paycheck, so when people want a reduction in our paycheck, that's your, that's our reduction. It now costs us money to, to be part of doing this and standing up for the community, no matter which side we're on. So, yeah, I was deeply offended by that. Since we're in the midst of May and testing, kudos to the teachers, the students, and their families, because I know there's students that are having anxiety and panic attacks over it, so I know it's not just the kids taking it, it's the families taking it, and we can say it's just a test, listen, it's another thing we'll blame on the state, right? Like, it's the funding and the testing and, you know, all that, we'll just blame on the state. So that's my comments. Dr. Tui, could you just touch on the agenda for tomorrow's curriculum? I probably should have given you that heads up before I started ramping, but.
So the policy meeting starts at 6 o'clock tomorrow, it'll be in central administration. The policy, Mr. Domeno's gonna go over new spectator policy, Mr. Wydell and Mr. Parton will be giving an update on the Board of Ed, or Board of Ed policy updates through Strauss Esme, and Mr. Yanizelli will be reviewing the artificial intelligence policy, which we're looking to adopt before the next, start of next school year. For part of the curriculum meeting, which starts at 7:00, Mr. Yanizelli will be reviewing the district device overview, he'll provide an overview on current computer purchases, starting around 2020 with the digital divide, review all of those purchases from 2020 on, which is where we went to one-to-one because of COVID. There'll be a technology plan provided for the 25-26 school year for grades K1 and 2, which is what was requested by the board tonight. There'll be a proposal for a plan for a district refresh coming within the next few years. Mrs. Stacy Winters, supervisor of mathematics, and Ms. Cheryl Barcuta, district math coach, will be providing an overview on three elementary math pilots for the 25-26 school year. They will be providing just general overview of the rationale, we are at the tail end of our Envisions contract, so we will be looking at another elementary math program within the next few years. And then the last topic for curriculum is the middle school summer school program and discussions for the summer of 2025, and whether the district, the Board of Education is comfortable with a specific number for students who would be enrolling in that program, and then I'll get that data that was requested tonight regarding the number of students who were enrolled last year and the percentage, give or take of what there would be for your reduced lunch.
Thank you.
Can I just do one more thing?
Good.
Like a shot, I forgot. I just wanted to thank the Miller PTA, they invited us out, well, Marjorie and myself out to Miller. We get invited to a lot of assemblies, some of them we have, you know, smile and they're nice, but this one was very cool. They invited John Marshall, the weatherman, I know Carpenter did it years ago, the whole green screen and how he could point and what looks like a tornado, so it was a great assembly. The kids left, had a lot of fun, we had a blast. I think there's a picture of me standing in front of. I think there's a picture of me standing in front of the seven-day forecast, so thanks again, the Miller PTA for that, it was one of the cooler assemblies. Thank you.
And the, the timing on tomorrow's meeting depends on the state coming through with an answer, right?
Yeah. Policy starts at 6:00, and then we'll see what happens from there.
Any other comments?
Sure. Without giving any recognition to the social media platform, there is a social media platform out there that targets students and has them do dumb things, and one of them right now is asking students to destroy their school device by putting something metal in one of the portals, the USB portal, something like that, causing, I think some school, somewhere they even had a fire that damaged a school, so just be aware. If you're caught, caught to have purposefully and intentionally damaged your device and caused harm to it, and it may have caused, have impact on the school, not only will you face the disciplinary repercussions, the possible law enforcement repercussions, you will also have to pay for that device in full, whether you have insurance plan or not. So if you're intentionally defacing or destroying that device, you will have to replace it and face the disciplinary and law enforcement repercussions that go along with it. Thank you.
Anything else?
I have one more.
Very long agenda meeting.
Just a, the Olbridge, what are we called? The Education Foundation was sponsoring a flea market this Saturday at the Grade 9 Center from 9:00 to 3:00. Again, the money that we raise is gonna go toward the grants that we're presenting on Tuesday at the next meeting, so this Saturday, Saturday, Grade 9 Center, 9:00 to 3:00, buy some junk.
Is there a rain check? Because I suppose the thunders on Saturday.
It's not gonna rain. I, I just, I just spent time with John Marshall.
No, I hope it does rain, I have eight games on Saturdays, I hope it does.
I hope it doesn't, so, and we're having a food truck there, too.
I'm gonna try out the sponsorship thing, you ready? This Board of Education meeting was brought to you by Just for Men. Just for Men brings color back to superintendent's hair after losing it after many years in service. That's right, Just for Men, thank you.
All right. Anything else? Last call. All right, a motion to go into executive session?
No, we're not, no executive session? Done.
Okay, all right, I did, I thought we were, I apologize. All right, motion to adjourn.
Mazonal motion, second, third, and fourth.
I fifth it.
No, no, no.
I thought we were, too.
I need to go home, because that's what Mr. Wydell said, but no, we're not.
Okay, I make a motion to override it.
Okay, so motion to adjourn.
Come next week to honor this, teachers and ESPs of the year in the auditorium. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.